Testing one two test test.
Thank you for watching! Please SUBSCRIBE to our channel for more content!
Okay, it is 6:02 on January 14th and I will call the North Kingston School Committee Business Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to recess to executive session pursuant to RIGL 42464 for discussion of sessions pertaining to potential litigation/ legal advice and collective bargaining pursuant to RIGL 42465A2 ESP negotiation update. And item two, discussion regarding matters of security included to, including but not limited to the deployment of security personnel and devices pursuant to RIGL 42465A3, update on security system. Can I get a motion to go into executive, please?
So moved.
Okay, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay. So we will, uh, recommute into open session and the first item on the agenda of is to the Pledge of Allegiance. So please turn.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the free and just as one.
Thank you. Um, roll call, please.
Harry and Earl.
Here.
Robert Case.
Here.
Jennifer Lima.
Here.
Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Here.
Joshua Portato.
Here.
Joshua Bush.
Here.
Before we continue, I'd just introduce two people. That's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. One, I just want to welcome Josh Portato to the School Committee. Josh is the newly appointed School Committee Representative from Jamestown, so welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. And also just want to introduce, we have a new School Committee Clerk here tonight that's here with Jules. Stephanie Bernaba has recently been hired as our part-time School Committee Clerk. Um, so Stephanie will be joining us here now for our meetings moving forward.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay. And then the calendar, please.
Tuesday, January 21st, School Committee Business Meeting, 7:00 PM Central Admin Office. Tuesday, January 28th, School Committee Business Meeting, 7:00 PM Central Admin Office. Advisory Subcommittee Meetings. Temporary Advisory Subcommittee Meeting on District Discipline. Thursday, January 16th, 4:30 PM Central Admin Office. DEI Advisory Subcommittee Wednesday, January 22nd, 5:30 PM Central Admin Office. Budget and Finance Advisory Committee Wednesday, January 22nd, 7:00 PM Central Admin Office. School Committee Office Hours will be January 23rd, 6:00 PM Central Admin Office.
Thank you. Um, and then the next item on the agenda is Presentations and Recognizations. And so we have the School Accountability Report, and I believe that's Mr. Smith.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, so we're here to present the 2024 RIDE LEA Accountability System in School Report Card. Um, do we have a clicker?
Yeah. All right. I respect that you almost just threw it. I saw it. I saw it in your eyes.
Thank you. All right. So, um, one of the things is there's a lot of detail we can delve into with the, with the accountability report. I'm not going to do that all the way tonight for the sake of time, but, but I encourage people to go to the RIDE website. All this information is public. It's available. Um, the link is here on this, on this presentation if you wish to do so. And, um, we'll get right to it. So just quickly, as, as far as the, what does it measure? So there's the different sections here are measured by the Accountability Report. You have achievement, growth, English language proficiency for our multilingual learners, graduation rates, diploma plus measures, um, and school quality and student success. Our diploma plus measures are measures that have to do with students earning career and technical education, um, credentials, um, and/or Commissioner's Seal diplomas. So this is our data for the North Kingstown, um, School Department. And, uh, as you can see here in these areas, um, we are, just the color coding, uh, the light blue is, um, is, is mid-level performance and the dark blue is strong performance. And you can see the space there for, as, as in room for improvement. Um, so that area, you can see achievement, growth, English language proficiency, graduation rate, um, mid-level performance, and then diploma plus measures, and school quality and student success is strong performance. Uh, there's also two, um, I, areas identified as being low-performing subgroups, and that would be our economically disadvantaged students for graduation rate and our students with disabilities for graduation rate. And so those are areas that we, um, will need to, um, make, make sure we continue to focus on. This just breaks it down into a little bit more detail, um, so you can see, uh, the district-wide performance in the following areas. Um, you have the achievement section is broken down to achievement in ELA and math, and also science proficiency. Um, then you have growth in ELA and growth in math. Um, you have the English language proficiency piece, graduation rate, and then the diploma plus measures, Commissioner's Seal, and post-secondary success. Um, and we have for the stool, uh, s- uh, school success indicators, uh, student chronic absenteeism, teacher chronic absenteeism, suspension rate exceeds expectations in ELA and exceeds expectations in math. And in all of those areas, the district did, uh, indicates strong performance. Um, so again, just to, just to reiterate this, um, we saw mid-level performance in achievement and growth. Um, we saw strong performance in ELA achievement, um, mid-level performance in math achievement, math in ELA growth, and science proficiency, um, strong performance in diploma plus and school quality and student success. We saw strong performance in post-secondary success, student attendance, teacher attendance, exceeding expectations in math, exceeding expectations in ELA, and also suspension rate. And then we saw mid-level performance in graduation rate, Commissioner's Seal, and English language proficiency. That just kind of breaks it down a little bit more. Um, priorities for future goals include maintaining our English language proficiency rates. We're very proud to see those rates come up this year, um, which was an area of, um, a targeted area for us, um, from our last report. Um, also for ELA and math and science, we're always going to be continuing to focus on achievement and growth because we certainly have areas there, um, of, of improvement that we can make. Um, closing gaps between subgroup areas is always going to remain a focus, um, as well as graduation rate, um, and all of these and more articulated in detail in our district strategic plan. Okay? So that's kind of covering just a broader overview of our district level performance. Um, this breaks it down to our school accountability. So each school, as you know, um, is given a s- a star rating. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that, about how that works, um, with this, but the, uh, the summary data for school accountability measures include achievement and growth, school quality and student success, English language proficiency, diploma plus, and graduation rate. And again, not all of these categories apply to all schools, as, as we'll see, as we, we take it through each, each of the individual ones. And just to break it down a little bit more, um, under achievement and growth, you see the ELA and math achievement, the ELA and math growth, the science proficiency. Again, uh, you see the exceeds expectations, teacher student absenteeism and suspension rate, and then the diploma plus post-secondary success, and Commissioner's Seal. So that just, again, breaks it down a little bit further there. The school star ratings. So the star ratings, um, school ratings are presented as star ratings. Um, and each school is given a rating from one star to five based on their overall performance across all indicators in the accountability model. Uh, again, I, I know you should know this at this point because we've talked about it in, in the past, but your overall rating is the lowest star rating you receive in the individual performance areas, which is a noteworthy piece because you could be a five-star school in every area, but a two-star in one category, and that one category will be your rating. Um, so that lowest rating will give you your rating. Um, the star rating performance level description is used in the School Accountability System of a basis for district performance level descriptions. So that's what feeds into our district performance. All right. I mean, this is, um, you know, fa- fairly, fairly self-explanatory. Our fi- our five-star school is a strong performance on all indicators. You see it go down from there, the four, three, two, and one. All right. So we'll start with North Kingstown High School, which received four stars this year. This is up from s- two stars, um, last year. And as you can see here, the high school earned-
Very good news.
Yep. The high school earned, um, earned strong performance or mid-level performance in all five indicators, um, including the English language proficiency, which, again, is a, is a significant, um, achievement, given the challenges that we faced, um, in that area. And so I'm very proud of the high school for the work that they've done. This is not something that happened by accident. Um, it's something that was done through intentional work and planning, um, and really great efforts by leadership and also by, um, the teaching staff there. So we're very, very proud to see that. Um, and they've maintained, obviously, their strong performance in, um, in the other areas. So our high school, um, they did a great job, and, uh, and it's nice to see the, uh, hard work reflected in these results. Um, there is one thing of note, which is that the student subgroup area of students with disabilities is a, is a targeted area for the, um, for the high school in, in achievement and growth. And so that will continue to be a focus around our students, um, with, with, um, unique needs, getting the support that they need to achieve at high levels. Again, this just breaks it down a little bit further. Um, as you can see here, the, the shades of blue coming through or indicate that we are at least mid-level performance, if not strong performance, in all of those individual benchmark measurement areas at the high school. Okay. Davisville Middle School was a two-star school. Um, in this area, they earned a, um, a five-star rating in the school quality and student success. Thank you. Um, and then the next item on the agenda is Presentations and Recognizations. And so we have the School Accountability Report, and I believe that's Mr. Smith.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, so we're here to present the 2024 RIDE LEA Accountability System in School Report Card. Um, do we have a clicker?
Yeah. All right. I respect that you almost just threw it. I saw it. I saw it in your eyes.
Thank you. All right. Okay. All right. So one of the things is there's a lot of detail we can delve into with the, with the accountability report. I'm not going to do that all the way tonight, uh, for the sake of time, but, but I encourage people to go to the RIDE website. All this information is public. It's available. Um, the link is here on this, uh, on this presentation, i- if you wish to do so, and, um, we'll get right to it. So just quickly, as, as far as the, uh, what does it measure? So there's the different sections here, um, are measured by the Accountability Report. You have achievement, growth, English language proficiency for our multilingual learners, graduation rates, diploma plus measures, um, and school quality and student success. Our diploma plus measures are measures that have to do with, um, students earning, um, career and technical education, um, credentials, um, and/or, um, Commissioner's Seal diplomas. So this is our, uh, data for the North Kingstown, um, School Department. And, uh, as you can see here in these areas, um, we are, uh, just the color coding, uh, the light blue is, um, is, is mid-level performance and the dark blue is strong performance. And you can see the space there for, as, as in room for improvement. Um, so that area, you can see achievement, growth, English language proficiency, graduation rate, um, mid-level performance, and then diploma plus measures, and school quality and student success is strong performance. Uh, there's also two, um, I, areas identified as being, uh, low-performing subgroups, and that would be our economically disadvantaged students for graduation rate and our students with disabilities for graduation rate. And so those are areas that we, um, will need to, um, make, make sure we continue to focus on. This just breaks it down into a little bit more detail, um, so you can see, uh, the district-wide performance in the following areas. Um, you have the achievement section is broken down to achievement in ELA and math, and also science proficiency. Um, then you have growth in ELA and growth in math. Um, you have the English language proficiency piece, graduation rate, and then the diploma plus measures, Commissioner's Seal, and post-secondary success. Um, and we have for the stool, uh, s- uh, school success indicators, uh, student chronic absenteeism, teacher chronic absenteeism, suspension rate exceeds expectations in ELA and exceeds expectations in math. And in all of those areas, the district did, uh, indicates strong performance. So again, just to, just to reiterate this, um, we saw mid-level performance in achievement and growth. Um, we saw strong performance in ELA achievement, um, mid-level performance in math achievement, math in ELA growth, and science proficiency, um, strong performance in diploma plus and school quality and student success. Uh, we saw strong performance in post-secondary success, student attendance, teacher attendance, exceeding expectations in math, exceeding expectations in ELA, and also suspension rate. And then we saw mid-level performance in graduation rate, Commissioner's Seal, and English language proficiency. That just kind of breaks it down a little bit more. Um, priorities for future goals include maintaining our English language proficiency rates. We're very proud to see those rates come up this year, um, which was an area of, um, a targeted area for us, um, from our last report. Um, also for ELA and math and science, we're always going to be continuing to focus on achievement and growth because we certainly have areas there, um, of, of improvement that we can make. Um, closing gaps between subgroup areas is always going to remain a, uh, focus, um, as well as graduation rate, um, and all of these and more articulated in detail in our district strategic plan. Okay? So that's kind of covering just a broader overview of our district level performance. Um, this breaks it down to our school accountability. So each school, as you know, um, is given a s- a star rating. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that, about how that works, um, with this, but the, uh, the summary data for school accountability measures include achievement and growth, s- school quality and student success, English lan- English language proficiency, diploma plus, and graduation rate. And again, not all of these categories apply to all schools, as, as we'll see, as we, we take it through each, each of the individual ones. And just to break it down a little bit more, um, under achievement and growth, you see the ELA and math achievement, the ELA and math growth, the science proficiency. Again, uh, you see the exceeds expectations, teacher student absenteeism and suspension rate, and then the diploma plus post-secondary success and Commissioner's Seal. So that just, again, breaks it down a little bit, bit further there. The school star ratings. So the star ratings, um, uh, school ratings are presented as star ratings. Um, and each school is given a rating from one star to five based on their overall performance across all indicators in the accountability model. Uh, again, I, I, I know you should know this at this point because we've talked about it in, in the past, but your overall rating is the lowest star rating you receive in the individual performance areas, which is a noteworthy piece because you could be a five-star school in every area, but a two-star in one category, and that one category will be your rating. Um, so that lowest rating will give you your rating. Um, the star rating performance level description is used in the School Accountability System of a basis for district performance level descriptions. So that's what feeds into our district performance. All right. I mean, this is, um, you know, fa- fairly, fairly self-explanatory. Our fi- our five-star school is a strong performance on all indicators. You see it go down from there, the four, three, two, and one. All right. So we'll start with North Kingstown High School, which received four stars this year. This is up from s- two stars, um, last year. And as you can see here, the high school earned-
Very good news.
Yep. The high school earned, um, earned strong performance or mid-level performance in all five indicators, um, including the English language proficiency, which, again, is a, is a significant, um, achievement, given the challenges that we faced, um, in that area. And so I'm very proud of the high school for the work that they've done. This is not something that happened by accident. Um, it's something that was done through intentional work and planning, um, and really great efforts by leadership and also by, um, the teaching staff there. So we're very, very proud to see that. Um, and they've maintained, obviously, their strong performance in, um, in the other areas. So our high school, um, they did a great job, and, uh, and it's nice to see the, uh, hard work reflected in these results. Um, there is one thing of note, which is that the student subgroup area of students with disabilities is a, is a targeted area for the, um, for the high school in, in achievement and growth. And so that will continue to be a focus around our students, um, with, with, um, unique needs, getting the support that they need to achieve at high levels. Again, this just breaks it down a little bit further. Um, as you can see here, the, the, the shades of blue coming through or indicate that we are at least mid-level performance, if not strong performance, in all of those individual benchmark measurement areas at the high school. Okay. Davisville Middle School was a two-star school. Um, in this area, they earned a, um, a five-star rating in the school quality and student
The link is here on this presentation if you wish to do so. And we'll get right to it. So just quickly, as far as the, what does it measure? So there's the different sections here are measured by the Accountability Report. You have Achievement, Growth, English Language Proficiency for multilingual learners, Graduation Rates, Diploma Plus Measures, and School Quality and Student Success. Our Diploma Plus Measures are measures that have to do with students earning Career and Technical Education Credentials and/or Commissioner's Seal Diplomas. So this is our data for the North Kingstown School Department. And as you can see here in these areas, we are, just the color coding, the light blue is mid-level performance and the dark blue is strong performance. And you can see the space there as in room for improvement. So that area, you can see Achievement, Growth, English Language Proficiency, Graduation Rate, Mid-Level Performance, and then Diploma Plus Measures and School Quality and Student Success is Strong Performance. There's also two areas identified as being low-performing subgroups, and that would be our economically disadvantaged students for graduation rate and our students with disabilities for graduation rate. So those are areas that we will need to make sure we continue to focus on. This just breaks it down into a little bit more detail. So you can see the district-wide performance in the following areas. You have the Achievement section is broken down to Achievement in ELA and Math and also Science Proficiency. Then you have Growth in ELA and Growth in Math. You have the English Language Proficiency piece, Graduation Rate, and then the Diploma Plus Measures, Commissioner's Seal, and Post-Secondary Success. And we have for the school success indicators, Student Chronic Absenteeism, Teacher Chronic Absenteeism, Suspension Rate, Exceeds Expectations in ELA and Exceeds Expectations in Math. And in all of those areas, the district indicates strong performance. So again, just to reiterate this, we saw mid-level performance in Achievement and Growth. We saw strong performance in ELA Achievement, mid-level performance in Math Achievement, Math in ELA Growth, and Science Proficiency, strong performance in Diploma Plus and School Quality and Student Success. We saw strong performance in Post-Secondary Success, Student Attendance, Teacher Attendance, Exceeding Expectations in Math, Exceeding Expectations in ELA, and also Suspension Rate. And then we saw mid-level performance in Graduation Rate, Commissioner's Seal, and English Language Proficiency. That just kind of breaks it down a little bit more. Priorities for future goals include maintaining our English Language Proficiency Rates. We're very proud to see those rates come up this year, which was an area of, a targeted area for us from our last report. Also, for ELA and Math and Science, we're always going to be continuing to focus on Achievement and Growth because we certainly have areas there of improvement that we can make. Closing gaps between subgroup areas is always going to remain a focus, as well as Graduation Rate. And all of these are articulated in detail in our District Strategic Plan. So that's kind of covering just a broader overview of our district-level performance. This breaks it down to our school accountability. So each school, as you know, is given a star rating. We'll talk a little bit more about that, about how that works with this. But the summary data for school accountability measures include Achievement and Growth, School Quality and Student Success, English Language Proficiency, Diploma Plus, and Graduation Rate. And again, not all of these categories apply to all schools, as we'll see, as we take it through each of the individual ones. And just to break it down a little bit more, under Achievement and Growth, you see the ELA in Math Achievement, the ELA in Math Growth, the Science Proficiency. Again, you see the Exceeds Expectations, Teacher/Student Absenteeism and Suspension Rate, and then the Diploma Plus, Post-Secondary Success, and Commissioner's Seal. So that just, again, breaks it down a little bit further there. The school star ratings, so the star ratings, school ratings are presented as star ratings. And each school is given a rating from one star to five based on their overall performance across all indicators in the Accountability Model. Again, I know you should know this at this point, because we've talked about it in the past, but your overall rating is the lowest star rating you receive in the individual performance areas, which is a noteworthy piece because you could be a five-star school in every area, but a two-star in one category, and that one category will be your rating. So that lowest rating will give you your rating. The star rating performance level description is used in the School Accountability System as a basis for district performance level descriptions. So that's what feeds into our district performance. All right, I mean, this is fairly self-explanatory. Our five-star school is a strong performance on all indicators. You see it go down from there, the four, three, two, and one. All right, so we'll start with North Kingstown High School, which received four stars this year. This is up from two stars last year. And as you can see here, the high school earned...
Very good news.
Yep. The high school earned strong performance or mid-level performance in all five indicators, including the English Language Proficiency, which, again, is a significant achievement, given the challenges that we faced in that area. And so I'm very proud of the high school for the work that they've done. This is not something that happened by accident. It's something that was done through intentional work and planning and really great efforts by leadership and also by the teaching staff there. So we're very, very proud to see that. And they've maintained, obviously, their strong performance in the other areas. So our high school did a great job. And it's nice to see the hard work reflected in these results. There is one thing of note, which is that the student subgroup area of students with disabilities is a targeted area for the high school in Achievement and Growth. And so that will continue to be a focus around our students with unique needs, getting the support that they need to achieve at high levels. Again, this just breaks it down a little bit further. As you can see here, the shades of blue coming through indicate that we are at least mid-level performance, if not strong performance, in all of those individual benchmark measurement areas at the high school. Okay, Davisville Middle School was a two-star school. In this area, they earned a five-star rating in the School Quality and Student Success metric. They earned a three-star rating in Achievement and Growth, and they earned a two-star rating in the English Language Proficiency category, which, of course, is the reason why they're overall a two-star school, because the lowest star is what you're assigned. English Language Proficiency obviously remains to be a focus area as well as Achievement and Growth at Davisville Middle School. So again, here's our more detailed performance scores from DMS. You can see a lot of good to point to in the strong performance areas of Teacher Chronic Absenteeism, Suspension Rate, Exceeds Expectations in ELA, Exceeds Expectations in Math. We have some growth, obviously, in the other mid-level performance areas, and overall ELA in Math Achievement, and overall ELA in Math Growth, and also Science Proficiency. And then, of course, the English Language Proficiency part, which is an identified focus area in that we only earned one possible point there at Davisville. Wickford Middle School maintained its status as a four-star school. So at Wickford, we had a five-star performance in the School Quality and Student Success area, and we had a four-star performance in the Achievement and Growth area. We had no identified subgroup identifications at Wickford Middle School. You might be wondering why it wasn't rated in the other three areas. It did not have enough students who fell into the English Language Proficiency category to be rated in that area. So as a result, it did not receive a rating in there. And obviously, Diploma Plus and Graduation Rate apply only to the high school.
So just to clarify, Wickford Middle School does not have enough students in the ELA area to even put them on this chart?
In the ELP area.
ELP.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
So does that mean like all, most, so basically all the middle school kids in town go to Davisville who fall in there?
It means that the number of multilingual learners adds up to a number that is not high enough to be rated as a category in Wickford. There is a number that rises high enough at Davisville to be rated in that category.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so here's our more detailed view of Wickford Middle School's performance. Obviously, we see, you know, strong performance there in the area of student, student, excuse me, chronic absenteeism. Suspension Rate exceeds expectations in both ELA and Math. Also, ELA and Math Achievement earned three points out of four, which is a strong performance. We have some needs there in Growth in ELA and Growth in Math, and also Science Proficiency where we're mid-level performance. And Teacher Chronic Absenteeism, I was surprised to see this one at that rate because that's very, that was just very atypical of our rating there. And quite honestly, I can say with confidence that's probably a, not a consistent theme. I think there were some circumstances last year worthy of absenteeism that factored into that. Unfortunately, RIDE doesn't make any distinction between absentees that are...
Excuse that, that's for teachers.
There you go. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, absentees that might be for long, prolonged periods of time. That was fairly unique, I would say, to the Wickford situation last year. Okay, next is Fishing Cove Elementary, who earned four stars. As you can see, Fishing Cove is rated in those two top areas. They were five stars in Student Quality, School Quality and Student Success, and they were four stars in the area of Achievement and Growth. You can see, again, the blue shades in the areas for Fishing Cove. So strong performance in many areas. We will be looking at the Exceeds Expectations ELA, where we fell down to two points in Achievement in ELA and also Growth in ELA. So that's going to be a focus at Fishing Cove. We had some really impressive scores a year ago at Fishing Cove. We took a little bit of a dip down this year, but we're looking at how we can kind of come back up and how we can get those ELA scores back on level with where we were previously. Forest Park Elementary School earned three stars. So as you can see there, earned five stars in the School Quality and Student Success and three stars in the Achievement and Growth.
Can you just go back one second, sorry?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Actually, thank you for prompting me there because I wanted to note also that there is a subgroup area in the area of Achievement and Growth for students with disabilities at Forest Park that will remain a focus there. So Forest Park had very strong performance in the, you know, in the School Quality and Student Success areas of absenteeism, suspension rates, exceeds expectations. We took a little bit of a dip in exceeds in ELA, but overall, we're pretty strong across the board there. Really great to see that Achievement in ELA and Achievement in Math were both in the strong performance categories at Forest Park. Growth in ELA is an area that we're going to be looking at, is just looking at cohorts as they progress through school and how we are seeing those scores, you know, tick up over time. Then you can see growth in Math, Science Proficiency. We were in the mid-level performance area at Forest Park. Hamilton Elementary earned three stars.
Rob, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
And maybe this can be addressed at the end. When there's a specialty program at a school, so for example, Forest Park has a student with disability, like where we send other students, how are they counted? Are they counted for their homeschool or are they counted for Forest Park? Has intensive resource.
Yep. Yep.
You know what I mean? So like there are students that would have been at another school that are at Forest Park in the intensive resource program.
They count for Forest Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the data is disproportionate.
Correct.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep, yep, yep. All right, so back here to Hamilton, five stars. We had a perfect score there in School Quality and Student Success. The three-star rating this year came from Achievement and Growth. We just took a little dip there. And I know that the school is looking at this data very closely and analyzing it, you know, at the grade levels in areas for, you know, instructional interventions. So as you can see, strong performance at Wickford, sorry, Hamilton, in many, many categories. We had strong performance in ELA and Math. Growth in ELA was mid-level, and Growth in Math is where we dipped down to the three stars this year. It was, it was, our scores in Math in terms of Growth, they do it on a percentile basis. Without getting into the really granular details of it, we were extremely close, like extremely with decimal points of being in the two area here. Unfortunately, we were in the one area, which brought us down to three stars at Hamilton. So again, it's an area that we're absolutely going to look at. We are looking at it as far as how we can provide the supports that we need and provide teachers with the supports that they need to make, to turn that around. And we are confident that we will. So that's the area of Hamilton. And then Science Proficiency, you see, we earned three points as well, which was nice to see. Quineset Elementary School jumped up this year from two stars to three stars. And again, Quineset's done a great job moving things forward in that area of English Language Proficiency. They were up this year to a four-star rating in the English Language Proficiency, up from it being a focus area a year ago. So again, kudos to them for their great work in closing those gaps. They're also a strong performance in the area of School Quality and Student Success and a three-star mid-level performance in the area of Achievement and Growth. There are some subgroup areas that will remain as targeted areas at Quineset, including Black and African-American students in the area of low performance, economically disadvantaged students in the area of Achievement and Growth, and then finally, English learners in the area of Achievement and Overall Low Performance.
Can I ask you, how do they measure the English Language Proficiency? Just because I believe Quid is four stars for it, and then those kids all go to Davisville and they're a two-star. Like what, is it just harder as they get to middle school what they're tested on?
It is. As they progress up in the proficiency levels, the test becomes, you know, becomes more challenging. I think also that, you know, middle school is tougher in a lot of ways for students beyond just the English Language Test itself. It presents new challenges to kids, obviously academically, with, you know, different courses and more sort of rigorous expectations expected of kids and...
The variable doesn't include when they arrive in the district either. So it's not like that, you could have a student that comes to Davisville Middle School that did not go to one of our elementary schools, that could be new to the language of English, and that won't get, that doesn't get controlled for. And so that one's always a tricky one in my brain because it's not the same.
That's...
Yeah, I was just wondering.
That's, yeah.
And also how it was measured. I wasn't sure what...
Yeah, no, same measurement in terms of the test. But yeah, Dr. El's point is a good one. That's true. As kids come up, it's, they oftentimes haven't come through our district necessarily, even though they're in the upper grades.
And then also just to note on this one, like when we're getting, seeing subgroups, it's only because we're able to report on those subgroups. So that could be the same at other schools, but there's not enough students to be able to report on it, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. The N number is high enough.
So Quid is able to report, but other schools we would not.
That's correct. That's correct. So again, here you can see kind of the visual of the Quineset scores in these areas. So again, mostly mid-level performance, so certainly room for growth, but definitely a step forward at Quid. And, you know, we're proud of the movement that they made. Going from two stars to three stars is a, it's a good step in the right direction. A lot of hard work, really great people over at Quid doing a really nice job. All right, and last but not least is Stony Lane Elementary, and Stony Lane was five stars this year. So as you can see, they were high level in both Student Quality and Student, School Quality and Student Success, as well as Achievement and Growth. Stony Lane performed very well, strong performance in all categories, with the exception of Exceeds Expectations in ELA. So we're going to look to keep that momentum going at Stony Lane. And again, great job, kudos to the group over there for all that they do. And finally, like I said, there is a significant amount of information about the star ratings, the Accountability System on the RIDE website. And if you wish to dive in further to this, I encourage you to do so. It's, there's a lot more there, but it's just an overview I'd provide for you this evening and happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the committee?
I have a few. Thank you, Rob. And I do want to commend everybody for the work that they put in over the past year. We definitely see an improvement. I did have a question. At the high school, the economically disadvantaged students, the graduation rate, as you noted, it remains a low-performing student subgroup, as does the students with disabilities. Those were both identified, as you noted in the District Strategic Plan, as a focus area back in May of 2023. In December of 2023, an update was provided, and it was noted that both the middle school and the high school would be establishing teams and a process would be put in place to identify and provide interventions for those students who are displaying dropout risk factors. And then we would be doing special ed achievement data analysis. Can you give me an update on that?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we're still, it's still a focus area. You know, it's still a focus area. The schools do have those teams. You know, dropout factors, there can be a lot of things at play. There can be circumstances that are really unique, that are somewhat out of our control, but there are circumstances that I think the school would admit that we can do better at. So I know that there's teams that look at this very closely. The reality is that we want to be in a position to make sure that at the basis of any school dropout decisions, a lot of times has to do with students feeling like they are connected at school, like they are supported at school, and that's really what we're trying to build there. Can we do better? Yes, we can. Will we continue to make this a priority area and a focus area? Absolutely. I know the team at the high school is very much committed to this, and the teams at the middle schools too, because the reality is that students don't come into high school with a blank slate. We need to make sure that we are providing the kind of academic and social-emotional supports to students, especially those economically disadvantaged who are facing much more, you know, barriers than otherwise. So to answer your question, it's a good question. It continues to be a focus. It continues to be a focus. It needs to be, and quite frankly, I know we can get better.
Okay, I'd like to see some type of, you know, like what the specific action steps that we are, like what the teams are taking for the students, because like I said, it goes back for the past two years. It's been identified as a, like a area where we can definitely do better, and it continues to come up every time that we see these types of presentation. Another thing was on the ELP rating.
If I can just note on that, Jen, for you. So at DA, there is now more of a focus on students that need to complete a GED program. So we're supporting students to get their GED, but they don't count towards our graduation rates, right? So there is some work that we're doing to make sure, making sure that our students are not just dropping out of high school and not getting anything, but that doesn't go towards our graduation rate as something that we are supporting and helping students.
Okay, that's good.
Just so you know, there are things, but it just, it doesn't show in that.
No, that's good.
And in theory, students are getting double counted in some categories, correct? So if a student is economically disadvantaged and receiving, has an IP or something, like you're seeing that twice, so it actually overinflates some of that.
Right.
Which is not good.
No, I don't like this one.
It's not. It's apples. It's not.
No, it's not. So the ELP ratings, did they change how they recorded that this year?
In terms of the, like, what proficiency that? They, they...
Do you know the answer, Jen?
Yeah.
I was saying, like, let's skip it. Like, did you notice something?
It just feels like there was like a sudden uptick. And not that I'm just doubting that everybody all of a sudden like did well, but I feel like it's a little, like, it's a little misleading, right? Like, it can change based on the number of students. But I feel like, did they move some students out of categories?
There was something on the news or something.
They did. They did. They did, they did, and again, if you want me to delve into details on it, I can get back to you on it for sure, but I know they did make an adjustment.
In general, but I just would like you to flush that out when we get there because, and the other thing, like if you notice, like, only if, like you pointed out, like the schools have the lowest, your lowest star is your rating, right? And most of the schools do not have enough of the...
Only three do.
Yeah, so I just, I feel like last year, we got dinged in a lot of schools for those. And all of a sudden, this year, the school, the scores have improved. And I just want to make sure that the comparison from last year to this year is based on the same type of metric. So if you could just be able to explain that when we have the MLL update at the next meeting, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
And the other thing, just as it kind of ties into this, is, you know, this is kind of... No, that was it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to note, though, that when we're saying like, oh, yay, a school's a five-star school, or it's a four-star school, not all of our schools are getting assessed on the same data. And I do think that is extremely unfair. I've said it publicly multiple times. I understand the rationale of your lowest score is your lowest score, but when that is, there's too many variables there for me, like the amount of students that are not, like, not being included because the N is so low or because you have an ELP population. Like, it just is not apples-to-apples whatsoever. And so I do want to acknowledge the good and hard work of the other schools that did get a lower rating because of that is, like, it's just not a fair, like, it's just not it.
Yep.
So I don't want them to think that. I want them to know that we see that and acknowledge that, I guess.
It's a much more complicated process than what is revealed normally. Yeah, so...
Any other questions or thoughts on the data that Rob has presented us? And I, so just one thing, I guess, is with the set teams, take this data, and is that kind of the next?
Yep.
Remember that, Jen?
Yep.
Josh, other Josh, both Josh's question. Great. Thank you so much. Okay, that moves us on to our next item on the agenda, which is Citizens Comments. Is anyone signed out for Citizens Comments?
No.
Does anyone sign up for Citizens Comments?
I don't need it. There's names on it. You can just keep it. Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. We'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dewitt?
We have a few items to go over tonight. So I'll start with some highlights for the high school. Our robotics team had a competition on January 4th. Actually, the high school actually hosted the first state qualifying tournament for the first tech challenge robotics competition. And we had some great success there for our high school teams. Our program had a very successful day, as three of the four teams that were in the finals were from North Kingstown High School. Two of our teams, Bolts and Bytes, bolts, sorry, Bolts and Bits and the Gonk Squad...
Don't get it wrong, they're going to be mad at you.
I'm kidding, right. Bolts and Bits and the Gonk Squad, placing first in the robot play portion of the competition. Another team, if it ain't broke, was the captain of the runner-up team. In addition to the robot play portion of the competition, our teams also did well in the judges' awards portion of the competition. The Gonk Squad won the Inspire Award for the top overall team with Bolts. The Gonk squads won the Inspire Award for the top overall team, with Bolts and Bits taking second place in the same category. They also won the Innovate Award for Most Innovative Design, and If It Ain't Broke, winning the Think Award for the Engineering Portfolio. All three teams now move on to the state competition that will be held on February eighth at the Lillie Tech. So congratulations and good luck. Also wanna note that we had a North Kingstown High School freshman, Nina Colado, who was asked to sing the National Anthem at the January seventh inauguration of the Rhode Island House of Representatives. It's nice to see how our high school students are getting recognized across the state. I also want to congratulate one of our seniors, Jalen Holmes, who scored her one thousand point at the December twentieth girls' basketball game. And congratulations to North Kingstown High School freshman Ella Grace Toler for earning third place in this year's highly competitive postcard competition for the thirty-second biennial young adult exhibition. Her artwork titled Amy Love Portrait is featured on the official exhibition postcard, which will be shared with hundreds of community members, artists, and art institutions across the state. This prestigious exhibition will feature fifteen North Kingstown High School art students, including Ella, making student selection an exceptional and competitive honor due to the limited space that we're allowed to send students to. The exa- the exhibition is from February first to the twenty-second, and the awards uh ceremony is on Saturday, February first. So congratulations to all of our students there. And we also had four freshmen at the high school compete in the two thousand twenty-four congressional app challenge. Um and they participated through Rhode Island's district too. Uh so I also wanna thank Ms. Ott, who is one of our STEM teachers at the high school, for advertising this to the students, and four of our freshmen competed. Um they will now have the opportunity to attend the House of Code Science Fair to present their app that they created and meet with hundreds of other students and congressional representatives. So congratulations to those four students as well. The North Kingstown Spelling Bee is this Thursday at six at the high school. Many uh students from our our schools participating. I also wanna note, Stony Lane Elementary School, um they shared their composting data. And I think this is important to note, based on what we're doing right now in the district with the grant, that we have an increase of composting uh throughout the, throughout the district at the schools. Um as of December fourth, uh well, let me back that up. So during lunchtime in the cafeterias, they're working on composting and recycling of the, of their food. And what waste goes in landfill, and what we're gonna collect for food that goes into the composting, what gets recycled, and then liquids get separated out. So as of December fourth, eighty-one point eight percent waste went to the landfill, and only three point nine percent was composted. And they have a school garden there, so they've been composting for a while. But now we're seeing an increase with the program we have in place, thanks to members from our our food services, and as well as members from the Forest Park community, who initiated the grant process for the district. As of January eighth, only twelve point nine percent went of waste went to the landfill. That was a decrease of like sixty-eight percent, right, from the previous month. And thirty point eight percent was composted, five point five percent was recycled, and eight point two percent was considered liquids. So we can see that just through this one initiative, the improvement that we're making in our community that impacts school, and what we're teaching our students. So I think that's, that's great to note. I was asked by Stony Lane just to put a thank you out there because they've been composting with their with their garden for the past few years, and the Stony Lane PTO has been very active in that, um with volunteers helping out as well. Um I know that's something we're trying to get to the school gardens and others throughout other schools in our our district. The last thing I'll note is just the Feinstein Award. If you remember, I mentioned um at a previous meeting that two of our schools received the golden ticket. The Feinstein program um does a raffle monthly of golden tickets, and students all at a Feinstein school receive a ticket. Uh Fishing Cove Elementary School in Davisville both had winners of those golden tickets, which is a a uh an award of five thousand dollars. Um so at Fishing Cove, they're using those funds to support student activities in the school. Um they'll use it to purchase supplies for their steam nights, um they'll put it towards guest storytellers and authors, and also materials for Reading Week that they're doing. Um they'll also use it to buy materials for their Wellness Week, so they take that funds and they look at what the need is across the school. Um Davisville also received five thousand. They're going to be um talking with their students and staff to determine how they're going to use it. They don't have a a exactly yet what they're doing with it, but they are going to be working with their students and staff to determine how that funds will be used. And I ask the principal, please keep us updated so I can share that help.
Any questions regarding the district, or the superintendent's report, excuse me? Okay, um moving on to routine items, um the first is to seal the minutes of the January fourteenth um executive session. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will disclose that were no votes taken in today's executive session. Moving on to the consent agenda, would anyone like to exempt anything from the consent agenda before uh we get a motion to approve?
Uh C three, C four, and D one, please.
Can I ask for um C five, six, seven, eight? And that's only because um Sherry and I weren't there for those, so.
Yep, so basically everything. Okay, cool. No, it's okay, it makes sense, it was funny. Only thing left is C one and two, so that's okay. Um we will start with that, so can I get a motion to approve um C one and two? And B one? Yep, okay, so we'll do, yeah, the consent agenda, which has B one, thank you for that, Mr. Case, and then C one and two. So can I get a motion for that?
So motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then can I get a motion for C um three and four?
It's a motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, um all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here.
Yep, got that, Charles. Okay, and then um I think we can, if it's for the same reason, we'll take um C five, six, seven, and eight together. So can I get a motion for that, please?
So motion, I mean, yeah.
Okay, um all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then two absentions? Perfect, and then item D, can I get a motion for that, please?
I'm gonna get a motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, and then open it up for discussion.
And then I was just, can somebody just explain the process for how this works? Like, what the, how we, like, what do we do when we are approving this? Just
The bus contractor?
Like, for just an explanation of how the process works?
Sure, so um anytime that we are bringing in a new driver, um it comes from a bus contractor. Um that person gets reviewed by Michelle as the transportation supervisor and looks at all the credentials. And then according to the contract, they have to be approved by the school committee before we can let them start driving.
Yeah, I just wanted to, because it's not something that pops up all the time, so I just thought an explanation would be good.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, here again, we'll call a question. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh so that moves us to the end of consent. We'll move on to uh reports. So we have under special reports, um personnel, um actions, and the uh report on student activity accounts by the high school. Any questions or comments regarding the personnel? Okay, thank you. I did wanna note, I believe, um we had some good news, Dr. Duvu, if I'm correct, um in filling some teacher assistant vacancies that we had had outstanding, so that's exciting.
Yes, yep, we are down to very few, a handful of positions that are still looking at this point.
Wonderful, great job.
Great progress from last year.
Yep, I just wanted to highlight that good thing, uh which is amazing. Um and then moving on to the report on student activity accounts um by the high school athletic teams. Um any questions regarding that report as presented?
I do have some questions on this.
Great, uh before you actually do questions, Dr. Duvu, anything that you wanna um address regarding that document of the the balances?
No, we were just asked to share out the um student activity accounts for the athletic teams. So um we, we, Wesley, um Powell, our finance director, myself, met with Mr. Tober, the athletic director, and Louise Clark, Mrs. Leach, who handles this, and we just reviewed what they had for uh funds within their accounts and balances as of uh the date of this report, which was January ninth.
Great, thank you. Um okay, questions?
So the report shows that this is from July first of twenty twenty-four through January ninth. So what funding sources go into these accounts? Like, where does this money, the money that goes into it, where does it come from, and what are these accounts used to pay for?
Yep, so it's, this would be um for any fundraising that uh the teams may have done um that that goes into the accounts. The purpose of this is for uh the student athletics, athletes, if there's anything that they need per team. Um the coach can make a request uh to our athletic director um for use of these funds for the teams.
And the, I know it's not a GoFundMe, but I'm gonna use the phrase GoFundMe because that's
So it's called Raise Snap, if you wanna be accurate.
So the ones that are currently running, are those funds deposited directly into these accounts?
So the funds will be, will go into this account.
Okay.
So that all will go through from um the company Raise Snap. And then that will go into the student activity accounts. And the goals that the, each of the teams set for what they're going to purchase, they would then make those requests through POs through the high school to use these funds to purchase what they're looking to buy for their teams.
So is there a common, like, process or policy for, like, does each team use this money for the same types of things? Because there's a pretty, in an understanding that, like, the football team has a bazillion players, and the golf club may have four. Like, there's a pretty big difference between the amount of money that each team has.
So there, they will fundraise depending on what it is that they're looking to purchase. So for example, one of the teams that we did discuss when we met was the boys' basketball team, and if you look at the amount they have, there's a machine that they use that um is roughly about ten thousand dollars. So they were fundraising so they can repur- they can purchase a new machine. So it depends what they're looking to get, and they will raise for that amount to then be able to go and make purchases that they're wanting to make.
So like, and just, and I don't wanna pick on the boys' basketball team, but they were sitting on twenty thousand dollars, and then they were trying to raise fifteen thousand dollars on top of that to buy a ten thousand dollar machine.
Hold on one second, I wanna look at the same thing you're looking, I'm just going back.
So they had twenty-three, six, four, eight.
So boys, high school basketball boys, they had twenty-three thousand, six, forty-eight, they spent seven thousand, three, forty-six.
And including their golf fundraiser in it together.
That's, so don't even look at that, that's old. So just disregard that is
On there then?
Well, so that, that is an account that's on there, that is something that we had talked about with um our athletic director of making that a transfer into the general athletic account. The boys' basketball team no longer does a golf tourney, that is something that's been there from the past. And we talked about how that needs to get turned around.
Exists?
No, the money is there, it's just still sitting there from a golf tourney that they know, no. So the boys' basket no longer does a golf tourney, that's, that's, those are funds that are there from the past.
But it, it exists for them, though, correct?
It's, it is still there from previous teams, but it's there.
So it would be there for them, correct?
They, they could use it, yes, or it could just go into the whole athletic department.
I'm sure there's some rule about it.
We can look at how that's getting used.
So
So where are you saying that they're fundraising ten thousand dollars?
On social media.
So those are wrong. So I looked into it, those numbers are wrong. Specifically, I looked into the swimming ones, that sparks my attention. Swimming is only raising fifty-one hundred. Something happened within the company that showed that swimming is now raising twelve thousand, and they are not, and it hasn't been fixed.
So that's a concern, like, that that those numbers are out there, okay?
There was some type of error that was there, but um Mr. Tober has documents
Okay.
of when he met with each team of what they're doing, and we have our own document of exactly how much they're raising, so.
So I guess one question that I have is, um are there any best practices on, like, the balances? You know, like, like, some of them are are pretty significant. Like, will they just keep rolling over year after year if they're not spent?
Well, what should happen, and we talked about this as well, that the year that you do your fundraising in, you should be spending the money in that year. So we're gonna
Yeah, like, in theory, at the end of each year, they should be at zero.
Same thing, like, when you have PTO events, you should be spending all that money within that year.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and I just wanna make sure, like, that each team, like, number one, I I believe that the district should be funding the necessities for each athletic team equally across each sport, right? Like, we should be providing for that. And, you know, it, it, we shouldn't be, each team should be getting one team shouldn't be getting warmups and another team shouldn't, right? Like, so I just wanna make sure that it's being handled equitably. And my other concern is, like, if you look at, like, the football team, right, like, if you look at the balance, it says that they have five hundred dollars, but they have their own booster club, right? So where is that money being accounted for? I know it's outside of the school department.
That's a private
Right. But it's still
That's not ours, so.
Right, so I I just, I just wanna make sure that that, 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 that all of the sports are getting the need to, like, the necessities.
Make sure within the budget, and we've talked to Mr. Tober as well, like, we provide what is required, right? So make sure they have uniforms, make sure they have the equipment. Some teams want additional stuff, and I think that's a, something philosophically we need to look at.
Right.
A team, one team wants warmups, but another team's not looking for warmups, should the, can that team still get the warmups? If that is something they're looking for?
Yeah.
You know, and as a school department, what should we be funding within our budget as far as what each team needs? We need to make sure they have what they need to play and be safe within their sport.
Agreed. Um what, can you just clarify for me, when it says beginning on, there's the beginning number, which I assume is the beginning of the fiscal year, and then the receipts number, is that the deposits?
Wesley.
Sorry, it says on the top of those
Various deposits, so the receipts will be money coming in.
Yep, so
And the expenses will be money coming out, so that's good.
So receipts is deposits that were made this fiscal year. So the high school football team raised thirteen thousand dollars this year?
Hasn't been spent it.
Like, like how?
So is the beginning to the number that it was prior to um July first, like, stuff they had left over from last year?
Oh, I see that too. You know, so I guess there's no way students just raise that. So are we having, like, who's, where's the money coming from?
Well, if it's good, it's coming from fundraisers, we can look and see exactly what those fundraisers were.
Yeah.
That's why, like, when I did this earlier, I did ask, like, specifically, what do you
Yeah.
Well, I don't, one of them had, like, a calendar raffle.
So if there's questions in here, I'll go back.
Yeah, yeah, I just
No, it was actually for, like, the girls' field hockey team that did it.
They had their own in addition to the booster club calendar raffle?
We'll, we'll find out, because we'll, we'll find out what type, what fundraising some of the teams might have done earlier in the year.
Yep.
Do they have to use all the money? Because I, you know what you're saying, like, the PTOs don't use all their money because they keep money to, just in case they, we couldn't raise anything the following year, then there would be no money in the fund.
Can we let the, oh, let Wesley answer that question, please.
And so the marching off again.
As always, you are welcome at the table.
I'm excited.
And I know.
Um so in theory, when they're putting in a fundraiser, so Mr. Tober has all the documents, they'll go, the, the teams will go to him and say, this is what we wanna fundraise for. So um there usually is money that carries over year to year. Um and that could just be because they've had it from prior teams that it didn't get spent, or they had, not everybody on the team wanted whatever it was that they were buying, so they ended up not using things. But when they do a fundraiser, if they're raising five thousand dollars, it should be five thousand dollars for a specific thing, and once it's raised, it should then be used. So you really shouldn't have these giant balances, because if they are being accrued because you're doing fundraising, it should be for a purpose, which you then use. And in essence, the teams that are raising that money should be the teams that are benefiting from that money, because the student activities are exclusively for student use. So you're not buying equipment that anybody in the school can use. I mean, it's for that team and those students, it's not the coaches, it's not anything else. So having these balances, you know, there may be reason to kind of look into it and say, hey, teams, you need to spend your money. But because those are controlled at the school level, and the district itself is not involved in that, it's not part of the general fund, it's not anything, um certain things over a certain amount I do approve, but for the most part, what they're fundraising for and how they use that money, as long as it falls within the guidelines of a student activity account, they're allowed to use it. Um so we don't, you know, I can't force them to use their money. But ideally, they shouldn't have these giant balances carrying year over year.
So it seems as if this is a concern we're bringing forward, but the oversight is at the end So it seems as if this is a concern we're bringing forward, but the oversight is at the individual school level?
Yes.
So. I think the initial concern was just perception of the students fundraising and it, it, the perception being that the district wasn't giving them the money that they needed for basic needs. Like, I think that was the original concern, that kind of opened up the conversation with some of the Raise Snap campaign. So I think that's where that was, but then this information I think is helpful. Um, any other questions on this one? Or follow-up information?
No, I guess I would just like to make sure that the administration is putting a process in place to review these accounts. Ensure that, you know, the money's being raised and spent. And, you know, that a team that is sitting on thirty thousand dollars is not, you know, because the, my other concern is like seeing, uh, hearing that the goal.
I just want to make, make it known, there is no team sitting on thirty thousand dollars on this sheet, just so the public knows that.
Well, the, the balance sheet that you gave me started the basketball team with a twenty-seven thousand dollar balance. If you combine the golf tournament, which I, I hear you that it's, but that was basketball. And then they spent seven, their ending balance was twenty. So they started the year with twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, and they have fifteen thousand right now.
Yeah, and then if you add in the golf money, it's nineteen.
But that's separate, so we're not, I mean, that's a separate account.
Right, but it is from the boys' basketball team, so that is their money. But my point is, the social media pushes that were going out from students were setting individual goals for students to raise between eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and a thousand dollars for individual students, which I don't think is appropriate. Because to ask students to be personally responsible to raise that type of money, you know, I, I don't think is okay. So that was my concern. So I just want to make sure that we are handling that in a way that doesn't put an undue burden on students or their families.
Anything else on this one?
Great, thank you, moving on. Uh, to the financial reports, we have the check registers and the bank statements. Does any committee member have questions regarding that? And then the advisory subcommittee reports. The first one is DEI.
The DEI advisory committee last met on December eighteenth. I was unable to attend the meeting, but I watched the tape and this report out is based on that. Dr. Earl and myself were reappointed as the liaisons to the DEI committee following the November twenty twenty-four school committee elections. And at this meeting, the committee voted to reappoint myself as chair. At that meeting, Rob Mizanati gave an update on the planning for the March twenty twenty-five Equity PD and discussed the outcome of the RFP for DEI consultant that had been on the school committee's agenda the previous day. The need to define a plan to roll out the district's equity vision statement and potential ways to do that were discussed. And the group will come to our next meeting with ideas for next steps. Talks continue about how to best determine areas of professional development, where perceived gaps are and how to engage student voice in that process occurred. And our next meeting is scheduled for January twenty-second at five-thirty.
Okay, any questions regarding that report? Next one is policy.
The policy advisory committee last met on January sixth. Dr. Earl and myself were reappointed as the liaisons to the policy committee following the November twenty twenty-four school committee elections. And at this meeting, the committee voted to reappoint myself and Dr. Juva as co-chairs. We continued our review of the district transportation policy. Additional updates were made and administration will share the updated version with district personnel, as well as with the North Kingstown Bus Contractor Association. We will come back to the policy group again after that for what is expected to be final revisions. We also reviewed again a proposed new McKenney-Bento Homeless Assistant Act policy. The committee voted to send that on to the school committee for their approval with revisions as discussed. At our next policy meeting, the problem, the priorities will be the assignment of students to schools and attendance boundary policies as they relate to the work that the school redistricting, start times and transportation advisory committee is doing, as well as continue to work on the balance of the policies currently on the agenda. Our next policy meeting is scheduled for February third at four-thirty.
Okay, any questions regarding that? And then the third one is the school redistricting, start time and transportation advisory.
No, you can do it.
You can do it next time, how about that?
Sounds good. I talked enough during the meeting.
So we met last week, last Tuesday was our last meeting. At that meeting, we reviewed some of the work that we did previously, just getting feedback from the members regarding just kind of like what, what we need to be considering as we move forward with this additional information, kind of what things that they wonder. We've been looking at the projections, student projections that we have, we're looking at, at the, the boundary maps. We're considering, you know, transportation. Been very clear that we have some short-term, long-term goals. Short-term is that, you know, we want to make sure that we can have a solution for next year regarding the elementary schools. So we're looking at, you know, having a, a recommendation brought forward to the school committee regarding redistricting at the elementary level. And then getting into, once you do that, you know, looking at school start times and knowing that transportation's a big piece. We had a conversation last meeting about transportation, because changing the school start times is going to impact transportation and we have to look at our fleet as well for that. We did talk about at the next meeting for administration bringing, bringing some possible solutions to the redistricting of what neighborhoods would move. We talked about transitioning students through that process, because if you are making a move within a neighborhood and you have students that are in fourth and fifth grade at one school, but they're going to be moved to another, what would we do? And we talked about, we definitely would, would, would keep them at their current school and we can talk about what that looks like. They asked about siblings, they said, you know, we don't want to split siblings. That this redistricting obviously would be something that we would have to transition phase in over a few years. Because that's going to kind of move everyone all at once. Because you might have a neighborhood that has fourth and fifth graders that are going to school A, but that neighborhood's now going to school B. So we said, you know, that is all the stuff that we are considering and want to be sensitive of. So we also talked about that this is a decision that's going to be based on the data, meaning the student projections, not the emotions that everyone has bringing into this.
Okay, thank you, questions regarding that? Did you have a next meeting set for that one?
Yes. It's.
Want to say February fifth?
Yeah, I can.
That's fine. I just was looking at the Google sheet and I didn't have it, so I just wanted to make sure there was something scheduled, so that's good enough.
We do.
Great. Okay, any other questions regarding that report? Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Can I get a motion for item A?
Make a motion to discuss A one.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll open that up. This is the CIP proposal for asset management, so Dr. Juva?
So this is the, um, what you have in front of you is the capital improvement plan for the next five years. I, along with Mr. Murphy, will be presenting this to asset manager on Thursday, so I want to make sure this, we saw this prior, before my presentation on Thursday. And also just noting a few changes that came up from our building committee conversation and discussion as well. And that is noted in the memo that's here of the focus areas of prior years for FY twenty-six is the installation of water bottle filling stations at our schools. The North Kingstown High School roof replacement, district ride ADA upgrades, school security vegetables for the schools that don't have them, as well as some HVAC and plumbing projects, and the specifics are within the CIP. If you were to compare this CIP to the one from September that you approved, just things to note, instead of it saying capital improvement year, I put FY year for the fiscal year. It's important to note that these fall, what fiscal years they fall in, not just a school, a school year. It's important to know that what's happening in fiscal year twenty twenty-six and you have that noted here. There were, there were some major projects that I did adjust and move because I, I think it got overlooked as we were going through this process. But it, it had in here that we were adding walls to Stony Lane, Quineset and Fishing Cove during fiscal year twenty twenty-six, that's not possible. So I, I, I did show and moved it out how that would happen in future years, but there is no way for that to get done for next year. And that was in here, and that'll impact our, you know, our drawdown schedule with the bond and timeline with the project. So you'll see those are further helped in this five-year plan. Fishing Cove does need to be moved, I, I noticed it even today when I was going through this, I, I did not move that one on what you see here currently. But that would get moved out to twenty twenty-eight as well, because it's not, it just cannot happen next year, timing-wise.
So what we approved is not.
Yeah.
We approved twenty twenty-six.
So what we approved in September, right, and this is up for approval right now.
Yeah.
Right, had those.
It's under discussion right now, but we could.
Yeah, had those three major projects in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. First of all, they should all never be put in the same year, because now you have three major construction projects happening at the same time with our elementary schools. And let's say something went wrong with one, like, it, it just should not all be planned in the same year. And also, time-wise, there's not enough time to get all of that work done and in for next year. So that was.
A mistake.
That was a mistake, yeah. I just, it was, somehow it wasn't seen, I think now that I'm going through this with a fine tooth comb, as the one really overseeing this project right now, I noticed, I noticed something that should have been figured, so.
One of the questions I had on that was how did you decide which one to put in one year, in which year?
Honestly, I mean, all three schools, I mean, I, I don't know if there would be a difference between going in Stony Lane, going in Quineset. I mean, you can say maybe look at the population of students, but we're going to do redistricting.
They're star rating.
I, I think, you know, it's just one school gets done, then another school gets done, then another school gets done. I don't think there is, there, there is a priority between what school goes first. I think in the end, in the five years, they're all getting done.
I have two other questions. The Fishing Cove fire replacement in twenty twenty-seven, what was the reasoning for that?
In comparison to what, Jen?
Like twenty twenty-six, I just, the fire, fire.
It got pushed out a year from the original one, and so you're curious on why?
That's a typo, it's twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Just, that is a typo.
Okay. That makes me feel better, thank you.
Line eight, not beach two? That's what we're talking about, correct?
Yeah. And the reason why I know, because I was putting together a presentation for asset management and I have it down for twenty twenty-six. So that is a typo that is there. Hold on, I just want to look at it, I'm just looking at everything right now.
And you said Fishing Cove is twenty twenty-eight, right?
Forest Park, not Fishing Cove, sorry.
Yeah, that's what, I assumed it was Forest Park, is that line eight, that's why I clarified that piece.
I'm going to make a note a little bit, all schools must start with unique, those letters.
Nope, that is the only, I apologize for that, I think I was putting, changing the gears.
All right, so that one's fine.
That one is twenty twenty-six.
Okay, all right. And then my last question was, I just, the, the DMS renovation is taking place in twenty twenty-eight and I know I should know this, but how does that compare to the timing of the new Wickford Middle School, like, being open and like ready for occupancy?
So new Wickford Middle would be... So we are in twenty twenty-five right now, tw- between nine.
The year after.
The year after.
Yeah.
Meaning twenty twenty-eight, is the year after or Wickford?
No, 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 Wick, Wickford wouldn't open until a, the year after we're doing the.
The DMS would have before Wickford.
Okay, okay, that's fine then, okay, thank you.
One question I had regarding this process, and it, it might just be me not understanding why, what the asset management committee does and, and what, how it works with the bond, is like there were projects that we were not able to do as part of the bond, we did not put them in the bond. And all the projects that are on this list are, are currently having funding sources. And so, like, is there a world where we need to be putting forward to the asset management committee so that the town is aware that like there is work that we would and should be doing for our schools that are not covered under the bond? Like, for example, the inequities with Forest Park and Fishing Cove not having gym, pe, like, you know, they have this caf, gymatoriums, whatever you call them. That impacts education, right? They can't have the same educational services, like, where does that fit in? Do we just never get to talk about that again?
I mean, so we could, I know the focus, what I need to present to them is showing the five year, but what is going to happen in fiscal year twenty twenty-six? And focusing on those projects, because that's what they're, they're looking at the budget for next year and what's going to be budgeted for next year.
But are we asking for anything?
Anything in addition to the bond? The bond for next school year?
Yeah.
There are some items I don't have the estimates on now that I'm working with Mr. Murphy on that we were going to put into the budget. They're not large items, but things that we've noticed in the schools that we need to do.
Yeah, you know what I mean, and again, am I just not?
Some of those rug, some of those rug replacements.
Am I just not understanding the process? Like, I just don't understand, I guess, like, where the asset management committee is taking recommendations.
It's an advisory, right? My understanding is they're an advisory, they're not really approving what we are necessarily doing as capital improvement of what we can or can't do.
Yeah.
Right, it's an advisory to the town of what capital improvement projects are happening.
Of priorities.
Priorities, yeah.
The truth is that the asset management commission used to be, carry a lot more weight in the town. So it's really something that doesn't fall under our purview. It's really something that needs to be discussed at the town council level, because in the past, it used to be the asset management commission would give advice based on their expertise. And that advice would or could have been followed by the town council. It seems to have flipped over the last few years.
Like, to fund projects.
To fund projects.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, like, why are we putting forward projects that we're already, we have already taken care of the funding for? Why are we not putting forward projects that we are asking the town to look into resources? So if they have a surplus or they have whatever, they could know that those were available, that's where I'm coming from.
I, I look at some of what the town has, they're doing the same with the police and fire, it's in the bond, they're putting the same thing forward, they're putting forward what is being.
So it's just performative, in theory.
It, it's just showing to them what's where, I mean, at this point, it's.
I'm not, not Chris is in you, I just don't understand why we have to waste our time, or just something like that.
These are the capital improvement projects we are doing for next year. There were a few other things that Chris is working on destinates for that are smaller projects at the schools that we need to do.
My guess is right, I mean, it used to be like stuff that would needed like capital funding for, like, and they were like the big projects and the asset management commission would rate them and say like, okay, we heard from school, we heard from police, we heard from water, and this is what we think the town should be funding.
And they would be listened to. But I also think it's, it's a give and take, I think that, you know, it would be nice if they would be a little bit more forward and say, you know, we have expert advice, we'd like to be listened to. They were chosen for a reason, right? They're, they're all experts in their fields. So I, I do agree, it's, to me, it's, we're spinning our wheels if we're going and nothing's really going to come of it. To me, it's just an extra meeting, but if something could come of it and we could get it back to the way it used to be, I think that would be very beneficial.
I think we should have, just like Erin said, like, say, like, because we've already gotten approval for the things that are on your list, right? I mean, we've gotten approval from the town, we've gotten the bond, we've gotten everything, like, and if we're not talking about the stuff that isn't even on that list, it's never going to be on anybody's radar.
So I guess my recommendation would be maybe just considering what some of those, if there was funding from, like, say the town ends up with a surplus, right? And they have capital funds that they are allowed to allocate towards different things. Like, there are still excessive needs in the district that I would want on this list or being presented to them that we would want to do in the next five years. Like, we have to change curriculum at two of our elementary schools because our facilities are not the same as the other ones. Like, that is a significant problem that we wish we could have done with the bond, but we had to remove because of cost. The town could, if they had the capital funds, fund a pri, put that on the priority list and make that recommendation to the town council. Do you know what I mean?
But are, are we changing the curriculum at the two schools that don't have a gym? I mean, there appears, they're not teaching different curriculum or, or scope and sequence from one school to another. I, I mean, I hear what you're saying about needing a gym, but I'm not sure that we can adequately or fairly say that the curriculum is different.
And if they change the times of things that they have to do things and kids have to eat way earlier, kids have to do, I mean, that is changing.
Well, yes, it impacts, it impacts, it definitely impacts, I, yeah, hundred percent impacts the schedule of the building, but I'm not sure it impacts the curriculum.
Yeah, maybe curriculum is the wrong word, but I definitely think that they're, they have to accommodate, they have to do different things than our other three schools have. Because of that structural challenge.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's just, I guess that's my opinion. I don't know.
Cause we also didn't put all the.
No, there's other CIPs.
Yeah.
So I guess my recommendation, or my request would be just taking a look at those and at least mentioning them. Unless we think, there's no world where we would wanna do that in the next five years, but I don't believe that that is where we landed. I think we just had to cap the number for the bond. And so that's where we ended up.
I also don't think we call out in this, right, like the stuff that we had identified. At at least I don't see it in here. I like, I know this isn't your actual presentation. We know that this is sixty four million versus the bond about, but it's not called out in here, the stuff that we identified as the holdover here for if we have that extra four million dollars, right? I think that needs to be.
I attached the memo.
You did? Okay, with the stuff that's not being, oh, yeah, there it is, okay, sorry.
Yes.
That that memo is in there.
Alright, any other questions regarding this?
Yes, I do have a question, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, so if you don't have an answer, that's fine, or if you don't even think it's a good idea. Um, I'm just curious, are, is there any communication with the individual faculty and staff in the buildings? Obviously, it's all here, I understand that, but not every teacher lives in the district, not every teacher or faculty member has the time to look through CIP lists and really pour over them like we're doing. Um, has there or will there be communication saying, oh, this is what we are going to be doing to, you know, the CIP improvement projects that we're doing in your building? Just so, for example, you mentioned Stony Lane and the walls, um, just in passing, I've heard people say, oh, we're getting walls at Stony Lane. And I, again, I understand you've made it very public that we're not, but.
No, very walls.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, no, in Stony Lane, the.
Yes, Stony Lane will get well, not next year.
That's what I mean, that's sorry, that's what I mean, like, in the, right, in the immediate, like, next year, like, right away. Um, just in general, the water filling stations, um, things like that. So are you, you know, is there a way to communicate or are the principals communicating? Okay, this, these are the projects that are coming down the line in the next few years.
Yeah, we can, we we can, and I I just completely honest, you know, we had a meeting at one school the other day and. I had, since Mesnati was noted that they do not clearly know what we're doing or understand what and why we're doing. When I left there, considering we go, you know, something that.
Well, and there was a lot of changes, which mean the different funding, bonds and CIPs stuff, so.
Put that, right, right. But it is something that could, I mean, we've, anything that went out regarding this was in my newsletters and shared out with the schools. So it's it's not, I don't, I don't think it's through a lack of communication, because anything I share with the public went to the schools.
Okay.
I think it might be that there needs to be maybe a little more specific conversation so they know, because everyone's busy. Not everybody reads everything on the same day.
That's that's kind of what I'm saying. And again, if it's something that's going to give you all more work, it doesn't need to happen, or it can happen later on. I'm just saying, if all of a sudden, I I'm also thinking about the democracy projects the juniors are all talking about, and I'm like, oh, that's terrific, we're getting this.
Right, but also too, I think that sometimes the students don't always know, right, so they may not see, it's like about the same thing with some emails, and it's like, oh, well, we did, we did that, like.
Right.
AC at the high school, we just finished an AC project at the high school for.
Ideally.
Of the school. So sometimes it's just, they may not note that.
Ideally, we have talked about.
One thing that has been helpful is that Mr. Mesnati and I met with the student union last week, right, with Josh and some of his peers. And so a lot of questions and sharing information. So I think it's finding ways to get that information out there, because it's not always best to do it in this letter.
One of our our requests, I think, at one point was um, like, a web, on the website for the the projects, like, the, like, this is happening, this is the timeline, started, finished. Kind of how like the state does, like, the like, on time, on budget, like, that sort of vibe. And so figuring out a way to have some up to date transparency. Um, obviously, we've had some some staffing changes, and then this was kind of evolving with the bond, but that is one of our, I think, long, long term goals is figuring out a way to maybe do that for the community.
Yeah, the dashboard for the projects, yeah.
Yeah, so I think people don't always have time to read through it, so it was like a punch list, like, this is what we're doing.
Good.
There's some considerations about how much advice we ask for as well, um, you know, what kind of toilet we put in, what kind of toilet or tishing is it gonna go in? You know, a bottle filling station is a bottle filling station, is a bottle filling station, you know, they're gonna replace the fountains. But when it comes to like what's your classroom configuration would look like, absolutely. That's when you reel those folks in and say, okay, what do you want? What do you think was gonna work, what's not gonna work?
And we had a meeting the other day at a school about that. So I mean, we are having those conversations, yeah, so we are having those conversations when it's at. At specific times of when it's needed and bringing people in for those conversations.
And I I'd like to point out, Mr. Murphy is, was extremely helpful when I had questions, um, but I love it, you're short, sweet, right to the point, this is what we're doing. Do 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 do. So you're an expert in your field, and I really appreciate you getting back to me as quickly as you'd, and in as much detail about the project, so thank you.
Any further questions about the CIP? Obviously, the two typos will get fixed. And then um, if you can, if you just can consider like figuring out some way to work in the the additional needs if if you and Chris see fit. Any other questions or comments regarding this? And then um, you can move on. Yeah, we can, yeah, so let's go on to the next item. Can I get a motion for A two?
I'll make a motion to discuss A two.
Second.
Okay, uh, can you give us some some background on this one? This is the proposal for the updated demographics. We have the memo, but if there's anything else you wanna add?
Yep, so, just want to clear that one. Um, so you're you're receiving this, um, because we have been requested through um, RIDE to update our demographic study. Um, I apologize for it just coming out today, but there's been a lot of back and forth with um, how this was going to be done and getting the proposal and the letters um, from who it needs to come from. As I thought I was gonna have this for you last Thursday, and it took a little bit longer up until this morning of getting the information, so I apologize for that. Um, so Rouse Architects is going, or is able to um, bring in Crawford TIS consultants uh, to do the demographic study. Department of Ed knows they will receive that around late March, so that's okay. Um, you know, the stage two, everything else we're we're getting to them is due February fifteenth. They know this will come to them. The uh, total cost for this is sixteen thousand five hundred. Um, it's my recommendation, and I spoke with Leslie about this, we read it, but this comes out of the unassigned fund balance reserve at this time. But this will all be part of the bond and, you know, the cash flow began what is coming out of bond and then um, obviously that would reimburse like what we're doing at this point.
Why do we need to do this?
Because it is a requirement from RIDE that we have to do it. We did a study and.
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty two. They want something more current. I have gone back and forth with them. I've talked with Nicole, who is our town planner. Um, looking at the housing developments that we have and all of the projects, nothing has changed. It was all in the twenty twenty two. Flow and land, flow analytics enrollment protections, but they are still requiring that for us to get approved.
Do we have a letter or something from RIDE saying that?
I can go back through my emails and my discussions and all, I mean, I, this is, it has to.
Is it a request or is it a mandate?
Actually, no, it's it's in our, it's in our, it's in the feedback we got from them. So I do have that in the feedback. So they are required, it is a requirement they want, they are saying it's required to be done. If we don't do this, then our stage two is not going through.
Is it, how often do they require this? Only when we do CIPs and new builds?
So they, so they require it when you're, when you're submitting your stage two, but we've been through this stage two process for.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but theirs. So.
And they won't fund it?
They won't fund it.
Yeah, they're just saying the twenty twenty two is too old.
It's unacceptable. Like, I I don't think that we're respectfully, I don't believe that they're correct.
I I understand, we've gone back and forth.
I, we have wasted an immense amount of money um, in the planning process for this when the bond didn't pass. That was a lot of money. Fifteen thousand dollars might not be a lot of money to ride, but it's a lot of money to to what we can use that money for instead for this project. I think it's completely unacceptable and a ridiculous request, and I, I don't know what we can do with that, but I think it's egregious that they're requesting it. Two years old, like, it's not like it's ten years old. It's not like we've built nine hundred houses since then.
We, we have tried to get them just to accept what we have, and they're saying they won't.
I'm not, I'm not willing to spend fifteen thousand dollars of this district's, like, of the bond money on something that is absolutely not necessary, so.
So if we don't do this, I don't think our stage two will be approved.
Let me just ask, because we seem to be in a impasse right now, um, what is, what are we talking here, timelines? So let's say we don't decide upon this tonight, and then.
So at this point, like, they, they, at this point, it'll take them to mid-March to do this. If we wait till another school committee meeting, it's just gonna put us behind on that, so.
And stage shoots May one, or what's the stage two time right now?
Nope, stage shoots February fifteenth. We're working on all the feedback and the comments and getting.
So we're gonna miss it no matter what.
Well, no, they will accept it. They've told us they will, they will.
As long as we started it.
As long as we have an agreement.
As long as we've, well, as long as they're in process, they know they'll get it mid-March.
Did they say why they're requiring?
Hey, could you read me that email? Cause I don't have it.
Well, no, it's not the email, it's back in the comments. I don't have it in front of me, I have to go back and find it, but it was, I have to go back through the. When they sent us all of the feedback in the comments, I have to go back through there, so.
I mean, if they're saying they would have to have it.
And again, it's it's also back through meetings we've had with them, we've been meeting with the SBA, and these are.
So you've already tried to.
We've already tried to, yes, as well as our OPM going back and forth with them and trying to have them just use what we've already said to them.
I just, I I have a hard time making decisions on like, cause we said so, like, you know, like, that's where I'm trying to look for like some quantitative reason of why they're, they're asking us to redo something that we just had done two years ago. Like, that's the part that I'm really having a hard time with. Like, it does not seem fiscally responsible to do that nor necessary.
If you look at the backup, it seems that they're requesting this because of something in our submission. Have they said why?
They said that the data was too old, and that they wanted something more current.
But it says, like, demographic study and enrollment for WMS, does this tie to that? The study will have to support the increased value of students that the submission is based on.
So if we go back to WSDMS.
They want us, they want us to put more kids in that building.
Yeah, they are looking to see how we can put more kids in.
But that's different than.
Which, it's, when you look at the flow analytics study, and you look at what um, housing developments and projects and permits that are in there. It matches up to the most recent one that I received from the town, and it's there.
So they want us to put more kids in the building, therefore we need a demographic study to basically justify.
Even though nineteen seventy is what we're showing as total of middle school, estimate of total middle school students at the time that Wickford Middle School should be.
So let me ask you something, um, our next school committee meeting is in a week from now. Is there any way that, I I mean, I don't know, um, Erin, would you wanna try to get more feedback on this? I mean, at this point, as long as we, if we have heard it next week, it would still be started before the February date, right? So.
Yeah, my, my personal recommendation.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're getting any different feedback from what we already have. I've had.
Right, but I'm not, the problem is I don't have, I don't have any of.
Well, what we have is the comments, but it goes back to what, Jenna, you're looking at the, I I don't have the comments in front of me, but.
Yeah, it looks like they're asking us to justify, or it looks like they're expecting us to put five hundred and fifty kids in Wickford Middle School.
It's not, it's gonna be probably around like five twenty is what we worked out in number two.
And so are they looking for an enrollment that will justify that?
They want the updated enrollment to show that, projections, because if you have.
It's not going to.
It's not going to.
Because if you look at, even if you look at, I mean, again, this is.
It's, and we're not, this is an I U K, this is.
Yeah.
I know, and usually coming to it, if we're gonna say we're gonna have nine hundred and seventy students, DMS can have house five change in their building. And you build Wickford Middle School to be able to do the same, right? And we've gone through with schedules, and that's the work we're doing now, creating schedules, so to have schedules to show that we can have five twenty in that building. Five twenty is taking away from your your building at DMS, and and what they're saying is, well, you do that, now you can look at how you can create more collaborative space at DMS because of the student population changes.
You you get less at at, like, there's.
DMS, you would have less at DMS.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, like, you're you're putting more students into WMS though, which is good on paper, but but we know we're limited for space in in that lot. And in that space, that's just the reality of what the town voted for, and so.
Right, and also too, when you look at your demographics of your town of where the students live and.
It's not where they live.
I don't understand how they, I I I'm at a loss for how they can dictate to us what works best for our school district. When you guys are in char- you're in charge, you know the numbers, you know the situation, you know.
They can't dictate it, they can dictate the reimbursement, and so we can have a reward.
Right, which is the safe difference, yes, yes.
It ties, it does, it ties back to the, what reimbursement we will get on the the building.
Right, so there's dangling cares.
My recommendation, my personal recommendation, and although we could just call the question and do the vote, is I'm I'm personally not comfortable voting for that amount of money. I do not think it's necessary, and I'm very concerned about the request from RIDE, um, especially, it's not, again, if it was six, seven years old, if we had put in Reynolds Farm since then and had a whole bunch of new, but that is not the case. My recommendation would be sending a letter from the school committee raising like extreme concern with RIDE's request. And, you know, like, I know that the administration's done it, but kind of escalating it to that one, that next level of saying like, this is a financial burden on the district. It will take away from the bond and what we're able to do. We feel, based on the superintendent's recommendation and the town's people, that this is not needed. And like, and try maybe one more time before we have to approve an unnecessary cost. Like, that one, to me, is just.
I I agree, I, I, I think this is the pushing it. And is that something that we could get done and hopefully get an answer back on as soon as possible and say like?
Well, that was my question, what's the, what are, what's the realistic expectation? If it's not gonna happen before the fifteenth, then there's no alternative.
Uh, right, exactly.
We have to move forward with it or we lose the building.
Right.
Or at least we have to have it in process before the fifteenth, right?
Right, but but like, I'd love to get an answer by next school committee meeting, which is a week.
To an end point is you could vote on it.
Yeah, I don't do a answer, but at least we could get it.
But we could say we have another school committee meeting and we wanna be able to make a vote or vote on it. So could you maybe escalate this if you're, this is your requirement? What do you think?
But is this letter gonna add any extra weight to it than what our administration has already done with it?
I mean, I I would say it'd have to go to them tomorrow.
I mean, if they fought for it.
Right.
Yeah, it would have to be something that's going to them tomorrow.
Well.
Which is doable, it's just.
I mean, it's worth a try.
I wanna, I I obviously wanna end writing this bit, like, I know that it's in the.
It's in the comments, I mean, it is in writing, that's what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, so, read the comment, Jen? But the comment is, there's two different things, right? So there's, that what I'm hearing from the comment is that they want more students in WMS, and that they're using, but I'm not seeing like, because we don't think your flow analytics data is correct.
Yeah, it doesn't say, there, it, it, where was it? I lost it, um.
How'd you not get to that, to be honest?
I did not get it.
I'm getting it from my laptop.
They're basically saying, I lost it.
Is it a read between the lines?
No, no, I haven't. Ride will accept the study post deadline. Once we have the proposal, we have to forward to Ride with the anticipated completion date. The study will have to support the increased value of students that the submission is based on. But then there's a whole bunch of other comments that talk about enrollment, need to identify an enrollment total of just over five hundred students. You know, it, there's a whole bunch of comments in here that are just.
So it's like the money they wanna give us linked to how many kids we can put into it.
So your reimbursement is, ask it, how many students that you're putting in your building to go at the fit, that goes within their formula that then says you're gonna get.
Didn't we get some of the?
If our proposal was not for five hundred and fifty kids in Wickford Middle School.
No.
They want it to be so they can give us more money.
You what, do we need it?
Well, and also, what's best for the students.
We bonded off of what we would.
Well, that's where, like, that's how we asked for, right? Yeah, that's, I mean.
Right. I mean, we have to, you know, this, the bottom line isn't always money, it's what's gonna work.
And what's gonna work for the next like thirty years, because we know that this school is the school for quite some time. So, I know, I, I'm a hard, I'm I'm a no, and like, I get that that is whatever, but. Like, I don't even think the comments, like, it's not, like, we as a district can consider the request about the more students in the building, and we can either say yes or no, but.
Erin, if you're, if if you're not clear on the comments, you could request them, right?
Like, so why don't we send an email and like, say, we don't agree with this, but if you could justify why we have to spend another sixteen five on this study? And that's the only way to do it, otherwise we lose stage two approval.
Yeah, cause these aren't the comments from Ride, these are notes from a meeting of, like, from Ride, right? Like, these are the actual notes on our.
So so it's like, why are you, what are you really asking for why?
What would happen if they didn't approve stage two, cause you resubmit it?
We'd have to, well, we'd have to.
Well, we've got.
We'd have to, well, we'd have to resubmit, and now, we now would have to. Right, so we're, so now we have to.
That's why I'm just asking.
So now we have to resubmit, right, so now.
Everything you've already submitted.
September fifteenth.
We submitted, but now costs go up, right, so every time it takes you longer, right now, this submit is not going to result in an increase of cost, but if we now wait.
And there are phases, like, you can't just submit when you feel like it.
Construction costs go up, right, so now you're talking about what we asked for, may not be important, but we gotta do.
Yeah, no, I, that's. I'm just the worst case scenario. Well, that's what I'm saying, I totally get Erin's point, but at the same time, if we are gonna risk not getting approval, that cost is much more significant.
I think it's worth a week.
I agree, I, I think, I don't think a week is going.
I think a week, but not probably more than a week.
If we could force an answer.
Can, can we take a recess? I'd like to make a phone call to know what type of impact it's gonna have.
I feel like, I'd like to phone a friend.
I do, I, I wanna call our OPM, I mean, but this could cause a, it might not be a week, it could even longer, and then we are not gonna get past.
Sure. Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Second.
All those people.
Aye.
Okay.
So we're going to come back from our recess and we are still in discussion for the proposal of the updated demographic study for, from RIDE. So, Dr. Duvva, any additional information?
Yeah, so I went back into my files and pulled out the comments, feedback from RIDE where it states that they are requesting this. And I have it right here, I highlight it, it says, please provide an updated enrollment projection report from a demographer to justify the proposed project. And so that is their formal request to us.
Yeah, I went back.
So.
I went back to. And I also looked at the necessity of stage one and stage two, like the guidance document and like the, where it talks about enrollment projections. It says the LEA should provide either an independent 10-year enrollment projection or agree with the provided enrollment projections from RIDE, SBA. If available for planning purposes, the LEA should use the five-year enrollment projection. The objective is to determine the number of students that, for which the building should be designed. The projection should be at minimum based on a cohort survival ratio and student progression model, provided projections by grade level and by year. The district demographics such as live birth statistics, population information, housing set, survival rate should be combined to project the district's enrollment 10 years into the future. We did that.
We did that.
It does not say that that information needs to be incurred within one month of submission, one year of submission or anything like that.
Within three years, so we did it in 2022.
What month did we do it?
April of 2022 is when it was completed, that's the date of the report. So three years would bring you to April 25.
And is that why they're asking?
But I think they're looking at three years within like us doing the work.
They also said though, like that the information that we provided from Nezbec was not acceptable in the comments.
And so I just talked to Inger about that and also statewide data was provided, they do have that, so they're writing in their response that that was submitted and they do have that data.
So that's the or, right? Or agree to provide enrollment projections from RIDE, SBA. We're not paying for it.
Um, did Inka have anything else to say?
So I asked her with the week, she goes, you know, it'll be a week, so I mean if it's, you know, if it's not tonight and it is on Tuesday and approved and not approved. You know, it just, it is, it is a week difference, right, of when the work is getting done to get to RIDE. We didn't know if there was any way to, if the committee would be willing to approve if RIDE comes back and says, no, you have to do it.
You have to do it.
Would the committee approve this? Because we can try to get a meeting with RIDE tomorrow, I know you wanted to write a letter from the committee and send a letter to them. We have a meeting, she has, she has a, a meeting with SBA on the 21st just to kind of go over some of the, where they are with the status of getting the feedback to them before we have to submit. But again, that's not until next Tuesday.
Could you have a meet, Aaron, this is just a suggestion to maybe make you more comfortable, if you had a meeting with RIDE tomorrow. Would it be possible to have a school committee member sit in on it? You know what I mean? Or does it have to be the chair or vice chair?
It's not really, like, you, you usually communicate with her, right?
We do, I mean, I mean, that's something, if you wanted to be there, you could.
No, I mean, and again, they only need three votes, so if three of you are willing to allocate this money to the study, the conversation can end right this second. I just personally think that based on what RIDE has said for the enrollment projections, what is required, what we are providing, that we are in compliance and that that request and the money that they're asking us to spend is not acceptable. Like, I don't, I don't know, but if three of you are like, yeah, it's totally fine, like, that sounds normal, let's do that, then we'll call the question, we'll vote and I'll vote no, like, that's okay. But I personally think, like, based on what they asked for, what we have provided, that we are in compliance with the stage two request and that I need information from them saying, I, I can't even find where it says it has to be within three years in any of the documents that I'm looking at. I'm sure that's somewhere, but like, like, based on what?
Like, I don't want $15,000 to, like, send this whole project up in a cloud of smoke.
No, we're not gonna do that, but.
But I, I would like to wait the week and see if we can at least, like, basically say, like, what, where is it that this is? Like, I get that you're asking for it, but where is it that it's a requirement?
Because if there's any possibility that we don't have to do it, it would be nice to just feel like we've exhausted all of our options and we don't have to spend this money.
And if the one week isn't going to make us miss a deadline or, like, push us, you know, horribly off schedule, at least we can say that we've tried.
Right.
So we can just table it till next week.
Or, as the superintendent, I think what he was sort of asking and hinting, a contingency vote, saying, we'll agree to pass it only if we go out one more time to RIDE and they just say absolutely not, that we're not budgeting on this. And then that way they can get them all rolling earlier, is that?
Yeah.
That might be acceptable as well.
Yeah, acceptable.
So.
We just have to.
You just have to make a motion and.
Yeah, and I don't doubt, Ken, that you've been pushing back on this, like, I, I definitely.
I, I know it's not.
Yeah, I just wonder if.
We're trying to actually support you, not go against what you're saying, like, like.
I just wonder if escalating it up one more from you, like, at, at, at least, you know, I mean, it's, it's worth a, it's worth a shot.
It's on the precedent, like, I, I would like them to please provide the documentation on the requirement for that enrollment projections need to be within a certain timeframe. Where is that written?
Or, or, as the superintendent, I think what he was sort of asking and hinting, a contingency vote, saying, we'll agree to pass it only if we go out one more time to RIDE and they just say absolutely not, that we're not budgeting on this. And then that way they can get them all rolling earlier, is that?
Yeah.
That might be acceptable as well.
Yeah, acceptable. We just have to.
You just have to make a motion and.
Yeah, and I don't doubt, Ken, that you've been pushing back on this, like, I, I definitely.
I, I know it's not.
Yeah, I just wonder if.
We're trying to actually support you, not go against what you're saying, like, like.
I just wonder if escalating it up one more from you, like, at, at, at least, you know, I mean, it's, it's worth a, it's worth a shot.
It's on the precedent, like, I, I would like them to please provide the documentation on the requirement for that enrollment projections need to be within a certain timeframe. Where is that written?
Or why is this not acceptable, like?
Yeah, why is something that's two years old not acceptable?
And is this gonna happen again in the future?
Right, and what is gonna be the next thing that they're gonna be like, you know what? You, now you need to provide this, at least, maybe that gets them a.
Okay, we'll stop here.
Okay, so we're still in discussion, any further discussion or, like, a motion, like, we would need, like, a different motion for action?
Rob, you wanna make a motion?
I've gotta think how to word this, so I will make a motion that we approach RIDE one more time for more information or an explanation. And if that still results in a, no, you have to do it, then we authorize the administration to go ahead and move forward.
Second.
Dider doesn't want that.
Nope, how do we do that?
How do we?
Nope.
No, I'm sorry.
It, it's, your face is probably right.
Like, how could we, could we say, could we do this, like, the contingency?
I, I'm trying to think of a, a way to make it concrete.
Yeah.
Would we have to, like, we need RIDE to give us, like, like, a concrete, no, it has to be done, so.
Well, are you, are you, are you seeking the regulation that states that your demographic study is out of date?
Yes.
Yes, so factual versus, well, we just feel like.
Or not so much out of date, not sufficient to meet the regulations.
Okay, what does it mean, St. I went into the, like, actual, like, you were looking at the comments or the, the thing that was attached was the comments from the meeting. I went into the actual prelim, preliminary application review document. And what it says is, enrollment discussion in section 1.5 references several sources, an outdated study from 2022, NESTEC numbers from 23, 24, and the statewide data from RIDE, which was not provided.
And it was, and I just talked to Inger, and that they're providing feedback on it of where it was provided.
Okay, please note that NESTEC projections utilized a cohort survival methodology and are not adequate justification for a major project. Please provide an updated enrollment projection report from a demographer to justify the proposed project. I wanna know where it says in there, like, in the world, that it, what, what makes an outdated study? Because I'm being given data from RIDE sometimes that's based on those, that, you know what I mean? Like, that is well older than this, like, thinking of those scores for the different buildings. And so I wanna know, like, where, and then I'm looking back at the necessity of school, stage one and stage two full guidance on how you're supposed to submit, it says absolutely nothing about timeframe. I wanna see where it's documented of what's outdated or not outdated, they should be clear about that, if that was part of the expectation, because we would have done it a long time ago and planned for it.
Yeah, you're right, if it said you must submit something that is within two years of the whatever.
Yeah, so I think what, what the motion is to me is that we, the school committee would send, like, an official memo to them saying we would like, you know, we're concerned about the cost, we believe that our demographics will not change if we do another study. We would like to see where, kind of, you've got it, go ahead.
Let's see, how about a motion to approve demographic study proposal submitted by Rouse Architects, subject to receipt of evidence from RIDE demonstrating that the April 2022 flow analytics demographic study is insufficient for stage two application approval?
I mean, it's much closer than.
That's right. It's out of compliance with.
Yeah, like, it's, like, they've already said that they think it's too old, but, but it's, but like.
And so that is their formal request to us.
Yeah, I went back.
So.
I went back to.
Do you have that?
I would, and I also looked at the necessity of stage one and stage two, like the guidance document. And like the where it talks about enrollment projections, it says the LEA should provide either an independent ten year enrollment projection or agree with the provided enrollment projections from RIDE SBA. If available for planning purposes, the LA LEA should use the five year enrollment projection. The objective is to determine the number of students that for which the building should be designed. The projection should be at minimum based on a cohort survival ratio and student progression model, provided projections by grade level and by year. Uh, the district demographics such as live birth statistics, population information, housing stats, survival rates should be combined to project the district's enrollment ten years into the future. We did that.
We did that.
It does not say that that information needs to be carried within one month of submission, one year of submission or anything like that.
It was not within three years, so we.
So we are in compliance.
In twenty twenty-two.
What month did we do it?
April of twenty twenty-two is when it was completed. That's the date of the report. So three years would bring you to April twenty-five.
And is that why they're asking?
But I think they're looking at three years within like us doing the work.
They also said though, like that the information that we provided from Nezbec was not acceptable in the comments.
Yeah, and so I just talked to Inger about that, and also statewide data was provided, they do have that. So they're writing in their response that that was submitted and they do have that data.
So that's the or, right? Or agree to provide enrollment projections from RIDE SBA. We're not paying for it.
Um, did Inka have anything else to say?
So I I asked her with the week, she goes, you know, it'll be a week. So I mean, if it's, you know, if it's not tonight and it is um on Tuesday and approved and not approved. Um, you know, it just, it is, it is a week difference, right? Of when the work is getting done to get to RIDE. It, we didn't know if there was any way to, if the committee would be willing to approve if RIDE comes back and says.
You have to do it.
No, you have to do it.
Yeah.
Would the committee approve this? Is, you know, we can try to get a meeting with RIDE tomorrow. Uh, I know you wanted to write a letter from the committee and send a letter to them. Uh, we have a meeting, she has a, she has a, a, a meeting with um SBA on the twenty-first just to kind of go over some of the, where they are with the status of getting the feedback to them before we have to submit. Um, but again, that's not until next Tuesday.
Could you have a meet, Aaron, this is just a suggestion um to maybe make you feel more comfortable. If you had a meeting with RIDE tomorrow, um, would it be possible to have a school committee member sit in on it? You know what I mean? Or is, does it have to be the chair or vice chair?
It's not really, like, you, you usually communicate with her, right?
We do, I mean.
Okay.
I mean, that's something, if you wanted to be there, you could.
No, I mean, and again, they only need three votes, so if three of you are willing to allocate this money to the study, the conversation can end right this second. I just personally think that based on what RIDE has said for the enrollment projections, what is required, what we are providing, that we are in compliance and that that request and the money that they're asking us to spend is not acceptable. Like, I don't, I don't know, but if three of you are like, yeah, it's totally fine, like they're, that sounds normal, let's do that, then we'll call the question, we'll vote, and I'll vote no. Like, that's okay. But I personally think, like, based on what they asked for, what we have provided, that we are in compliance with the stage two request and that I need information from them saying. I, I, I can't even find where it says it has to be within three years in any of the documents that I'm looking at. I'm sure that's somewhere, but like, like, based on what?
Like, I don't want fifteen thousand dollars to, like, send this whole project up in a cloud of smoke.
No, we're not gonna do that, but.
But I, I would like to wait the week and see if we can at least, like, basically say, like, what, where is it that this is? Like, I get that you're asking for it, but where is it that it's a requirement?
Because if there's any possibility that we don't have to do it, uh, uh, it would be nice to just feel like we've exhausted all of our options and
Yeah.
we don't have to spend this money.
And if the one week isn't going to make us miss a deadline or like push us, you know, horribly off schedule, um, at least we can say that we've tried.
Right.
Yeah, so we can just table it till next week.
Or, or as the superintendent, I think what he was sort of asking and hinting, a contingency vote, saying, we'll agree to pass it only if we go out one more time to RIDE and they just say absolutely not, that we're not budgeting on this.
Right.
And then that way they can get them all rolling earlier. Is that?
Yeah.
That might be acceptable as well.
Yeah, acceptable. We just have to.
You just have to make a motion and.
Yeah, and I don't doubt, Ken, that you've been pushing back on this, like, I, I definitely.
I, I know, I know it's not.
Yeah, I just wonder if.
We're trying to actually support you, not go against what you're saying, like, like.
I just wonder if escalating it up one more from you, like, at, at, at least, you know, I mean, it's, it's worth a, it's worth a shot.
It's on the precedent, like, I, I would like them to please provide the documentation on the requirement for that enrollment projections need to be within a certain timeframe.
Yeah.
Where is that written now?
Or why is this not acceptable, like?
Yeah, why is something that's two years old not acceptable?
And is this gonna happen again in the future?
Right, and what is gonna be the next thing that they're gonna be like, you know what? You, now you need to provide this, at least maybe that gets them a.
Okay, we'll stop here.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still in discussion. Any further discussion or like a motion, like we would need like a different motion for action?
Rob, you wanna make a motion?
I've gotta think how worth this. Um, so I will make a motion that we approach RIDE one more time for more information or an explanation. And if that still results in a no, you have to do it, then we authorize the administration to go ahead and move forward.
Second.
Deter doesn't want it.
Nope, how do we do that?
How do we?
Nope.
No, I'm sorry.
It, it's, your face is probably right.
Um.
Like, how could we, could we say, could we do this, like the contingency?
I, I'm trying to um think of a, a, worrying to make it concrete.
Yeah.
Would we have to, like, we need RIDE to give us a, like, a concrete, no. It has to be done.
Well, are you, are you, are you seeking the regulation that states that your um demographic study is out of date?
Yes.
Yes, so factual versus, well, we just feel like.
Or not so much out of date, not sufficient to meet the regulations.
Okay, what does it mean to?
No, so I, I went into the, like, actual, like, you were looking at the comments or the, the thing that was attached was the comments from
Yes.
the meeting. I went into the actual prelim, preliminary application review document. And what it says is enrollment discussion in section one point five references several sources. An outdated study from twenty twenty-two, NASDAQ numbers from twenty-three, twenty-four, and the statewide data from RIDE, which was not provided.
And it was, and I just talked to Inger, and that they're providing feedback on it of where it was provided.
Please note. Okay, please note that NASDAQ projections utilized a cohort survival methodology and are not adequate justification for a major project. Please provide an updated enrollment projection report from a demographer to justify the proposed project. I wanna know where it says in there, like, in the world that it, what, what makes an outdated study? Because I'm being given data from RIDE sometimes that's based on those that, you know what I mean? Like, that is well older than this, like, thinking of those scores for the different buildings. And so I wanna know, like, where it, and then I'm looking back at the necessity of school, stage one and stage two full guidance on how you're supposed to submit. It says absolutely nothing about timeframe. I wanna see where it's documented of what's outdated or not outdated. They should be clear about that, if that was part of the expectation, because we would have done it a long time ago and planned for it.
Yeah, you're right, if it said you must submit something that is within two years of the whatever.
Yeah, so I think what, what the motion is to me is that we, the school committee would send, like, an official memo to them saying we would like, you know, we're concerned about the cost, we believe that our demographics will not change if we do another study. We would like to see where, kind of, you've got it, go ahead.
Let's see. How about a motion to approve demographic study proposal submitted by Rouse Architects, subject to receipt of evidence from RIDE demonstrating that the April twenty twenty-two flow analytics demographic study is insufficient for stage two application approval?
I mean, it's much closer than.
So much closer. No, that's right. Is out of compliance with. I like the legal.
Yeah, like, it's, like, they've already said that they think it's too old, but, but it's, but like, like I said, nowhere in any, and, and I could be missing something, they could come back tomorrow and say it's right here, and then we'll say, okay, if you said it was within two years, we're out of compliance, no problem, we'll do it again, but like.
Yeah, point me to the regulation or where it says in the application that it had to be.
So is that tight enough, though, like, of where?
This reading is um you could say that the study is outdated in accordance with state regulations or RIDE regulations?
Like necessity of stage two? Yeah. Like, if in the guidance it said enrollment projections and it said the LEA should provide enrollment projections that were calculated within the past two years, I'd be like, cool. Like, we're out of compliance, no problem, but like, that's not what it says. And like, so if that's what.
I think we just ask them to provide proof, you know, just to explain themselves and then.
Yep.
Then we have an answer.
So I'd support the approval with the way that Deter wrote it, like the motion, the way that Deter wrote it, if someone wants to.
Deter's writing it right now.
She's writing something else.
Can I have that when you're done?
All right, do you want me to say it one more time?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the demographic study proposal submitted by Rouse Architects, subject to the receipt of evidence from RIDE demonstrating that the April twenty twenty-two flow analytics study is outdated in accordance with the necessity of school construction regulations for the purposes of stage two application approval.
Sounds good.
So.
Second.
Any further discussion? Just to clarify, we're approving the, the funding that, like, you said the it, but just that it's that amount that we are approving upon that?
Do we need to put a time um thing on that, like?
Yeah, 'cause we need to hear that.
Like.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, like. Like, what if they don't get back to us in, within three weeks? But we don't get a yes or a no, we don't get anything, like, what? Ken can't move forward.
Okay, um, what about?
Well, I guess we could put it back in the agenda next week.
Within it, yeah, so what do you, you have to have every, what do you have to have by Thursday or next Tuesday?
Well, we could always put it on and then pull it, though.
Okay, let's do that, so um.
Yeah, I think even for practice of what we're saying, we wanna get this started, not to wait until next Tuesday.
Yeah, that was the whole point of doing the contingency vote, was so that you could.
Can we get a response to it by Thursday?
Right, but either way.
Reach out tomorrow and try to get something by Thursday, so we know whether moving forward or not, so that proper, you know, that we, Rouse and Rouse can get this worked on.
You think it's good enough? She says. Any further discussion?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, okay, moving on.
So point of order, just do we wanna move as we progress in the agenda with an a to time to see if there are any items that aren't time sensitive that can be tabled for the next meeting?
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
I'd be happy to table the ones that I asked to be put on. And it doesn't even have to be next meeting, they're not time sensitive.
Yep, okay, we might.
I, I know you want it ordered, but.
No, just give me the, the letter so I can mark it.
Yep, so it is, what business? Um, E and F.
Okay, and then we can also table G.
Yeah.
That's just an update.
Um. We can table L and J.
Yeah.
And B in unfinished business.
Did you say, oh, you said D.
Yeah, B in unfinished business.
D is in unfinished.
Oh, I meant new, that's good. Okay.
Do we need to just.
No, I wanna just keep going.
Do we, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically. Yeah, so I think, yeah, so I don't think, I think what, the goal of what we were just discussing is that when we get to items that maybe don't need action, that if, depending on how long things go, but if we can get to things, like, I would like us to try to move through some of it. So, let's go back to where we were, which is B, um.
Is there, can I just, is there any way we can do the items that the people that are here can leave?
Yeah, yep.
Like, can we do the, the bus contract sent to next and then do, can we do C, then H, then I, and then? I'm just wondering, just definitely.
C, H, I under new business?
Yep.
All right, so can some?
I'll make a motion that we move C, H, and I to the next on the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Hold on a favor.
Aye.
All right, so starting with C, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Ken, just like quickly, like you did with the other one, can you just explain the process? Is it the same as it was for the first one?
Yes.
Okay.
All the same.
Is it in compliance with the current contract?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Nope.
There's a question, okay, here now one other question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And thank you each. Motion, please.
I will make a motion to approve.
Can we do a second?
Second.
No, I will make a motion to discuss.
No, that's discussed. Why are we doing that one next, then? Oh, for that, yeah.
That way Leslie can.
I'm just looking, all right, go ahead. So we make a motion to discuss, H should be a second?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, um, so Ken maybe, or Leslie? These were recommendations from the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee to the School Committee. Do you have an attachment?
So these were.
No, there's no attachments, these, these are for discussion, these are items that came up at the, at the last Budget and Finance Advisory Committee for the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee to be reviewing.
I, I, I think they're back on here, 'cause there might have been a question as to the reports. I, I'll be honest, I wasn't sure why we had it back on here, 'cause I did think that we clarified it in the last meeting, so um, if there's, essentially, this was just what the Budget and Finance Committee discussed that we thought would be good reports to bring to the committee quarterly. We just wanted to make sure that that's what you also thought were good reports? But, so if there's something I'm missing as to why it's back on here, please.
So the, these are not back on, these are different items at the last meeting in December. Um, at, at the Budget and Finance Advisor Committee in, I don't remember what it was. Whenever the last one was, there were six items that were on our agenda for discussion that we approved to be moved up to the School Committee for their approval. At the School Committee meeting in December that I wasn't at, not all of those were put on that agenda. So these were missing from that agenda. So the School Committee never actually reviewed these three particular items. These were not on the agenda.
All right, so do we?
Oh, so I think um, one of the things we discussed, and maybe I misunderstood this in our Budget and Finance meeting when we were talking, is I think, now I understand, I see what you're saying. I think C was what we included, I think in our conversations, we had just decided to call it something different as opposed to being maintenance of fund, funds, it was talking about like key accounts and resources, like, so that encompassed whatever we thought was like a of area of concern. So I, I thought we did cover that one, we just changed what it was called.
Right, yep, okay.
Um, and then the um oversight of capital improvements, I know we had discussion back and forth about whether that was something that should be in that committee and not, so I um did not give that to Jules when she asked for those reports, 'cause I didn't think we all agreed on that one.
We did, we voted it in the advisory committee, that it should be brought up to the School Committee for them to vote on it.
Okay, okay.
So it should have been on the agenda.
Okay, so that was my misstep on that one.
Yeah.
Um, and then the.
A.
A. I don't know why that one was left off, I'll be honest, because that was the main thing that we talked about, so um, that, that should have been on there.
Okay.
That was it.
So can somebody clarify for the School Committee what the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee approved? Like, what they voted on to move up to us? That, I'm lacking that clarity.
So, hold on, I, I can't.
You know what I mean, like, I would imagine they'd say, like, this advisory committee advises the School Committee to establish.
Yes, and that's actually part of, like, what I wanted to discuss with this, is that there needs to be, like, a process for when the advisory committee, like, makes a vote and um, you know, takes.
That's not in the agenda right now, so we can talk about it.
I know, but I just wanna, like, it needs to be part of the process, because it shouldn't it, this is still not the complete list of everything that was, everything that we voted on still hasn't been brought forward.
Is anything time? Is anything time?
Wait, wait.
It does not time.
What has not, 'cause I, I, now I'm completely confused, 'cause that, these are all the agenda items, so what do we?
They're not, but like, the incentives for the bus drivers and the TAs that we approved to be moved up to the School Committee are not on the agenda.
Right, but that's also because we're in negotiations, not.
But it doesn't matter, if we vote on it, it needs to be moved forward to the school committee.
All right, it sounds like this might be a table at this point, like, this is not, like, I need the, we need the official language.
We don't even have the information. This is the official, these are the ones that are missing.
Yep. So did the Budget and Finan, did the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee vote to ask the School Committee for the purview to oversee the capital improvement in school, middle school construction?
They did.
Like, the construction?
Yeah, and.
The money?
We had a, we had a discussion at the advisory level about this.
Who's the chair of this committee?
It was Jim.
It was Jim.
So can, can we talk about some of this right now? I think the overhaul of the capital improvements in middle school, we already had it the Building Committee, and I think the Building Committee should be doing it.
And that's what we discussed in that meeting, and I was opposed to it coming, yeah.
And then we also have the Town Council who oversees that.
Who voted for it, though?
And that's why I left it off.
Not me.
It was, was brought forward to be discussed.
Yeah.
But I, I don't think that needs to be, you know, covered at that level.
So the Advisory Committee is not making that recommendation?
I would say as a school committee.
It's not, it's not like an opinion thing, you voted on it or you didn't.
It should be directed to the.
Oh, I don't disagree, but I'm confused about what the Advisory Committee is recommending.
My recommendation was that it be brought for the School Committee for them to decide, because there was disagreement at the Advisory Committee level.
Yes. To, to decide whether it should or should not be part of the committee.
It was, there was no vote, there was no vote at the Budget Finance Advisory Committee to say the Budget Finance Committee is going to do this.
You're not making your recommendation, you can decide.
It was brought forward that, it was voted that it should go to the School Committee, should that Advisory Committee be the ones doing this.
For them to decide.
And I think the second layer of confusion was when I was asked for the agenda item from the meeting, you weren't here. I thought it was specific to the reports that we said we were gonna provide, not all the votes. So I only gave the reports that we agreed upon. So I did not get the correct information to you, because I misunderstood what was being asked, so.
Okay.
So that's part of the confusion, too.
So I don't believe that B belongs with the Budget and Finance Committee, I think it belongs with the Building Committee.
I agree.
Dr. Ju, I agree.
I agree.
I would agree with that.
So you're saying we need to vote?
Yes, we need to vote.
Yes.
It's not in their purview, we don't need to vote. We would only need to vote if we were going to assign it to them. That's not in the Budget and Finance, like.
Okay.
Charge to oversee capital projects and middle school construction?
Sorry, I was just gonna pull the chart up.
Yeah, pull it up, but I'm ninety percent sure.
Oh, it's a hundred percent not, yeah.
So why would we vote on?
So we don't, like, you're just saying it, we, we shouldn't, you guys shouldn't even have discussed it.
Well, no, they can, they can ask, they can ask, yeah.
But, okay.
If you wanna make a motion to, to officially.
I would like to, so that it doesn't continue to pop up.
Yeah, then make a motion. Make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to say that oversight of capital improvements in middle school construction does not belong with the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee, it belongs with the Building Advisory Committee.
Second, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other actions that the School Committee needs to make regarding the other recommendations at this point?
Um, just on A and C.
Okay, do we make a motion?
I will make a motion uh to approve uh A and C in the Budget Advisory Purview for them to prepare those reports as requested.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Ju, do you think as far as, like, work, like, for the administration, that these are reasonable reports to produce and that they're, like, worthy of a time with the Finance Department? That would be my concern, so I defer to you on if you think that these are worthy of, of being pulled at this frequency.
I would say yes, as long as they are being requested with a reasonable amount of time, and we can set up a timeline of how often they are provided to the Budget and Finance Committee.
But one's quarterly?
Yeah.
Is that, do you think that's reasonable?
Yes, I would say yes.
I do, yes, I do.
That is, and then A, there is no timeline on it, but it has to do with the budget, I just wanna make sure that we're, anything that's requested of us is requested within enough time for us to actually produce it.
Can someone clarify what budget preview and recommendations for School Committee consideration means? 'Cause I literally have no idea what that means. Like, the other one I understand, like quarterly review of maintenance funds and projected resources, that makes sense in my brain. I don't understand what the request is for.
This was going back to the idea that um prior to budget discussions at the School Committee level that a, like, a quote-unquote trial run would be.
So that they were, isn't that literally the whole purpose of the Advisory Committee?
Yes.
And that's, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah, so, so A is not a report, it's, 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 we want the committee to do this thing.
It's like.
Not re-moting it.
Only C is the report.
And that's what we're doing at the twenty-second.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
No.
That's a disaster, great, all right, we're good then. Um, any questions from the committee regarding any of those items? All right, let's move on to, aye, thank you. Um, what was the other one?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to discuss.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Ju, back.
So I provided you a memo with, with the most current, up-to-date of where we are with the renovations of the D building, um, which we are pretty much complete, um, and we have a walkthrough to do, but we successfully have renovated the section of the D building to be able to suit it to be the classroom um space as well as the um, space for with the machines and the actual work that the students will do for the machinist program. Um, so we have two rooms that are being used for the machines and the hands-on learning that they'll do. There's a lecture room and it's a small storage room. Um, as of December thirty-first, the construction rental is at ninety-eight percent, and I mean, it's the time we wrote that. Chris?
Um, the construction, with the exception of the key locks, has been completed, and we did the walkthrough today, then it will generate the punch list, uh, which will be executed probably within the next two weeks. Very minor things, you know, ding in the paint, you know, so, just a whole bunch of little things, a scratch, ceiling tile, things of that nature, so. It's ready to go. So the, the next step is Chevalli and Rich Powell are now working with Electric Boat and their procurement folks to purchase the actual machinery and the tools that will be affixed to that machinery to start the work there. Uh, as well as the compressed air system has been identified, and it too is being purchased through Electric Boat and will be installed over the course of a, probably a four to five day installation process, but that'll likely be in the middle to the end of February. Not sure how fast Electric Boat will be able to order the machinery, so that one's still up in the air. But the folks from the compressed air company are ready to go, they can't wait to get in there.
Any questions regarding the memo?
Um, never heard anybody describe excitement over compressed air installation before.
Oh, I have. I would just say, one, one comment I had was just if there are any additional in-kind donations that we hadn't previously approved, just making sure to bring, if it, like, I don't remember the, that thing you just mentioned.
Oh, it was for what?
The compressed air, whatever you.
Oh, the compressed air has always been part of the program.
That was always part of?
Can't run machinery without compressed air.
Okay, perfect, oh, okay.
Rich Powell did mention to me today that I believe a um, an alumni or alumni parent uh has made available potential donation of a manual aid as opposed to a CNC, if it's your operating aid. Uh, and he was looking at that this week, so.
All right, yeah, just, just make sure it's.
Do we have, like, a lead time on them? I know you just said you weren't sure about the E B, do we have a, an idea on the lead time and the materials and the equipment?
They are, they are processing our P O's at this time.
Oh, hey, good to see you there.
They're processing our P O's, so we're just waiting to see when that gets through, uh, once the P O's are through, the old machines get ordered, and then we'll have to figure out what the delivery time is, so I don't have an exact date, but, um, we're waiting to hear from you.
We're, we're on for Paul.
Everything is in, it's in process.
Yeah, we're still on track for Paul?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And has, have any update on, like, outreach to Jack Reed's office, or like, any funding for future years?
Um, we haven't reached out to Jack Reed's office yet, and the reason for that is we want to see where we stand. We ordered some machinery, we want to look at our expenditure report, we also have some leftover money from Perkins, so we're going to see, like, we're gonna see where we are now, what we need.
Yep.
And then we're going to send the balance to complete the program to Jack Reed's office.
Okay.
Because we want to be really intentional about.
What you're asking for.
What we're asking for, why, and where we stand.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much for that update, let's move on, go back to B.
Uh, we can table that one.
Um, what, under?
Uh, unfinished business.
I don't have any action.
I don't think that's, that was just an update, I don't think there's anything time sensitive on that right now.
No, so, I mean, I, I may really just tell you, so we have, we have ten, we do have ten thousand dollars that hasn't spent.
Wait, hold on. Yeah, can you hold on, can someone make a motion?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a motion, just in the interest of time to table it.
Just make a, if somebody wants to talk about this item, make a motion to talk about that.
I can talk, wait.
Make a motion to discuss that.
Okay.
So, um, there was a request, if there was any funds left, to be, see if it could be used for the dugouts, there is ten thousand dollars left, that we could say yes, could go towards the dugouts, it's not complete, I think it was like fourteen thousand that they needed, um, to do it, but we do have ten thousand left that we could put towards it.
An additional potential from gate receipts and everything, and, but we're waiting for them to do, like, the R F P and all that stuff, so we need to vote, so the ball is in their court.
Yeah, we can let them. Yeah, we have to.
Why is this on the agenda?
Because this was one of the items from the budget and advisory finance committee that got approved to be moved down here on everyone's.
Is that, okay, so we?
It's a, that's all.
There's not a date, it's, there's ten, that, there's.
Great. Okay. Um, policies?
Uh, so I will make a motion to discuss, um, new policy J F A T D, McInnes-Bento.
Second.
Uh, so this, it says first read with revisions, because this is actually a first read of a new policy, um, which is in line with the Federal McInnes-Bento Homeless Assistance Act, Assistance Act, to ensure that children and youth who are experiencing housing instability have equal access to the same educational opportunities as other children and youth in the district. We will see this policy one more time before voting on it.
Any questions regarding this?
Nope.
Does this, um, version include the feedback that we received from the teacher?
That was on the next one, the family engagement.
Oh, never mind, you know that comment for now. Um, okay, so we'll see that one again, um, moving on to the next one.
Um, I will make a motion to approve, um, K B L E A, Title I, Family Engagement.
Second.
Um, can I? Oh, I was gonna, can I make a motion to make that change that we had gotten?
They're in here.
Oh, you did make the change?
Yes. Yeah, you can have a copy of that in front of you.
Yeah, it still says, um, limited English proficiency.
Yeah, I'm gonna discuss that when I.
Oh, we're just taking a motion to discuss, I thought.
Yeah, to approve, and then I'll make the.
Yeah, just to clarify, we can make a motion to approve something, and then, once we're in the motion and we need to make an amendment, we can, um,
Yeah, we did that, okay.
Or Jen could have said, uh, it differently, but it's okay, it's okay to do that.
Usually what'll happen is I'll make the motion to approve, I'll talk about the policy, and I will make the changes on the fly in my conversation, and then we'll approve it. Yeah, okay. So, this is the second read of an existing policy, just been revised to reflect inclusive language and to update some policies and programs that are no longer in existence. I've made some changes to the draft that you saw at the December seventeenth meeting, based on some feedback, and you all should have a copy of that in front of you. Those changes are in blue, those, uh, remove the floating E, define what the C R P is, and, uh, tried to find a middle ground between naming specific schools and providing a way for parents to know which schools are applicable to the policy. And then, based on feedback received, um, since that time, I'm also going to propose tonight, um, which is not included in what you have, adding a sentence to the philosophy part that says, note that the use of the word limited English proficiency instead of English learner or non-English language preference in this policy is to comply with the language in the federal statute. Whenever possible, the district strives to use asset-based language instead of deficit-based language. There are some, as I had read at the last meeting, there are some larger changes to this policy that need to be made in order to make it more family-friendly. So once these revisions are approved, it'll go back to the policy committee, but at this time, I'm recommend, recommending approval of the policy with the changes that I just presented today.
Jen, where would those go, under philosophy?
Yeah.
Other questions or comments on this?
Yeah, just a change on page three, letter D, uh, if you're gonna do parents and guardians throughout, I believe that the very last sentence in red, um, the last line, and language that parents understand, just for guardians.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Any other notes?
Um, so then you are, so are we not changing the limited English proficiency?
We can.
We can, because of, so you're adding that federal part?
Right, it won't change in the, in the policy, but a note will be added to the philosophy part of it, referencing why.
We can't change it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing, so on page four, number seven, where you have wish crossed out, is, I just feel like it doesn't read right. Available to all, who, to review, comment.
Page four, number seven, is that?
Yeah, see, so.
Yeah.
Does that not read, do you know what I'm saying?
Well.
Cross out wish, but I feel like.
Yeah, because it's making information about the C R P available to all, uh, the, who should be crossed out, too, all for all, who.
All to review and comment, okay, so who should, all right.
Yep, yep.
For a minute, I was like, yep, I'm like, does that not read right?
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, and then a thank you to the staff on this one, correct, Jen?
Yes, yep, that change with the English, um, language learner came from one of our faculty who pointed that out, and I appreciate that.
Also, I believe our title one coordinator also helped a lot on this one, too, correct?
Yes.
Um, any other comments? I don't see you, you go with this one.
Yep.
So, the motion is to?
Approve based on the changes we discussed this evening.
So do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I think, like, Jen, your original motion, I would probably withdraw it and just make a new one.
Okay, so I will withdraw my motion.
Wait, hold on, teacher's making a case.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an apostrophe.
Just in the title, there shouldn't be an apostrophe.
There's a L A S, there's, the apostrophe needs to come off.
Okay, I, okay, so I will withdraw my motion, and I will make a motion to approve the policy with the revisions as discussed this evening.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, where are we? New business. Uh, can I get a motion for eight, please?
Um, I, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this item?
Um, I can just say, we're adding, um, a new member, since I was a member, but now I'm the school committee member.
Okay.
So opened up the spot.
Can you, was the, did this person, they had previously applied, or did we reopen the application?
Yep, they, yep, they previously had applied, so it was kind of, they were, would have been the next person.
Yep, so we're in alliance with the policy.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Hearing no more call the question, all those in favor of approving the recommendation from the Health and Wellness, um, advisory, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, next item, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Same, same question regarding process?
Yeah, so we had had a teacher who had resigned, and so we, uh, filled the spot with a teacher who had previously applied and had been on the waiting list, for lack of a better term.
Okay, any questions regarding that?
Nope.
Okay, hearing no more call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
One comment on advisory committees, I just want to, um, ask again, um, if we can get, if part of the policy requires that, uh, advisory committees be listed on the website with the chairs and the members, if we could get that out there, that would be helpful.
Yes, I know, you keep asking, we're, we're getting to it, so.
I know, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's on our.
Okay, so now we are on, we did C, correct?
Yep.
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 D, that was an update, just the update on S R, um.
Which you have memo.
Yep, so, can we just?
All spent, yep.
Can we just do a, a motion just to open that for a sec?
Uh, motion to discuss.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, uh, any questions regarding the update on the S R three, uh, document that is presented to us?
No. I would just, again, to thank, um, Dr. Clark for all her, uh, hard work in managing.
And the finance department.
And the finance.
And, and the staff, actually.
And staff, everybody, yeah.
Yeah, that's, we had, we acknowledged that that is a feat, to do that, um, and to do that, um, well, so, great job to the administration on that. Okay, um, no action needed there, um, E?
Can I make a motion to table E and F?
Yes. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 G, do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Or we could just literally, we're not going through it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to discuss.
And then?
Second.
Yeah, um, so this one is literally just, we had the meeting, um, yesterday with the town council and the state representatives, all four, um, that represent North Kingstown were present, um, from both the House and the Senate side. Um, we were able to present some legislative priorities to them, um, and they also were discussing their priorities, and so I just wanted to put it on here as part of official record, so. No further, further comment, and just thank you to the state legislators who took the time to meet with us. Okay, C, we didn't have to do that, done. Um, H, we, ours go on, all right, we're good on, Eva, we're gonna do this, um. J?
J.
Yep. Okay, so can I have a motion for J?
Okay, I'll make a motion to discuss.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, um, we have a memo from Mr. Mazanati regarding chronic absenteeism. Um, obviously, we know this is a huge priority for the state, and so we want to be doing our part in trying to keep an eye on the numbers within the district, any questions, um, specific to this?
Yes, uh, thank you for the update, um, since we're getting these quarterly now as part of the policy moving forward, can you, instead of comparing it to the prior year, uh, provide the difference to the prior quarter instead?
Prior quarter?
Yeah, because you're gonna be giving the updates quarterly, so I'd like to see that change to, uh, the prior quarter versus the prior year. I mean, you can do both if you want, but I think it's more, um, real time to see what the change is from quarter to quarter.
Um, I can, I just know that the state, so the state, um, dashboard doesn't provide that as far as quarterly is concerned, so we'd have to dig a little deeper for that, um.
But you're gonna be giving it to us quarterly.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, so, okay, so, I hear what you're saying, so the next time I do it, I'll compare it to where it is from now?
Yeah, like, look at the one that you just gave, that's all.
Got it, all right.
And then, if you, you don't have to, okay, you don't have to answer me now, but like, I'd like to know what the driver is for the increase at D M S.
Okay.
And, a, a question, like, the leaderboard on the RIDE website, like, if you drill down, it gives, like, reason, does it, like, it'll show you, absent, absent for religious reasons, absent for illness, absent for other, like, how accurate are those?
The absence reasons?
Yeah.
Well, it's kind of hard to say generally speak, I would think, I think they're generally accurate.
It's coming off of the, the daily reports we send, so we have to send daily reports.
Like, we are, we're like clicking buttons to indicate that.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's as accurate as the people that are putting it into the system, and then a, a report goes to RIDE with our attendance.
Because there's like a whole lot of, like, other.
Yeah, we, we, we saw some, we saw some errors that were in.
Okay.
Um, that, that were like, you know, clearly misaligned to like the grade level and, and the reason. But in, in a general sense, I think looking at the macro view, it's, it's, it's pretty accurate, you know, but there are.
Because I would say, like, in some schools, there's like more others than there are illnesses, um, and so I would question.
You're looking for consistency in our reporting.
Or more questioning, like, why do we have more unknown absences than we do illnesses?
If kids went on, like, vacation, you know, like, we're out of school for that reason, is that one of the things to check, or is that other?
Yeah, we don't want to make assumption, we can find, that's a change.
Yeah, because we can get specifics of why, because the codes that are in there, when would they be used and why?
So we can talk to our data manager just about the actual codes that the, each school has the ability to use and why they're using them.
Yeah, so I guess two questions, like, what are, like, what are the codes, is it consistently used from school to school?
Because if kids are out for field trips, how does that get?
That was one of the reasons, I think, field trip was on there, there was a bunch of.
I'm just thinking, I'm trying to think, like, what is some of the, like.
Yeah, I think we can look at the, we can look at the trends across the schools and see what kind of obvious discrepancies there are.
In what school, I'm sorry, I just, what school did you say that you had more information on?
D M S.
D M S.
Yeah. On the report that Rob provided, that was the school, it had like an eighty percent increase.
Nope.
No, that's not it, it was point one nine.
I was gonna say, it's less than, it's less than one percent.
It's point one nine, point one nine.
But still.
No, the one that.
Point one nine is point two percent, yeah.
No, isn't it zero point one nine, like, less than one percent?
Yeah, zero point one nine.
That's what I took it as.
Oh, I was reading it as twenty percent, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Nevermind, I'm gonna, you have a good time.
Because if that's.
I'm going to leave school, I'm gonna keep up to close the school.
Okay.
Say, why you said D M S, and I'm like, why are we going back on?
Okay, do we have, so.
It's okay. It's, it's nine fifty-three.
Okay, it's.
It's all right.
It's all.
Okay, any other questions regarding?
There is a decimal point there.
Decimal points are tricky.
Instead of talking to me, move on, in the best way, all right, anything else about the chronic absenteeism? Okay, um, thank you for, for providing that information, and we look forward to our next quarterly update. And great job to the, the staff that's behind helping students get to school. Okay, um, do we have a motion for K?
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to extend until ten fifteen, so that we can talk about K.
Okay, second.
I cannot discuss it in three minutes, I see you glaring at me over there.
I was just gonna say, make a table to hers.
I'm not.
I'm just saying, I was just saying, that's fine, that's your priority, do you have a second? Uh, all those in favor of extending, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, you have a motion?
To discuss.
To discuss.
Okay. So, I just, I really want to express my concerns with the R F P that was discussed at the last meeting, I know you all had a conversation about it, I know you all tabled it. The scope of the responses on the proposals seem to far exceed what we need and what we ask for. We don't need an equity audit done, we don't need data disaggregated, um, you know, and getting some updated input from stakeholders is never a bad thing, but we've done that as well, and we know what we need. It was my understanding that this R F P was to find consultants to provide equity-focused professional development, but the scope of the R F P was much broader than that. In addition, there were references in it to the vision of a graduate, which calls into question how tailored this R F P was to the actual purpose. In the equity audit that was done in twenty twenty-two, um, one of the priority recommendations was to prioritize equity-focused professional development. In conversations with the consultants, at the time of P C G, they stressed how strongly they believe that mandating this P D for artistic staff, district staff, and administrative was. Our staff has told us that they're looking for this training, you know, we've heard it over and over again. You know, I heard it said in the meeting, and I saw it in the memo accompanying the R F P bid, that, uh, it was put forward before the equity position had been filled, but Sally had already been hired at the time, she just hadn't started, you know, we don't have the in-house personnel who are capable of actually providing the training in this area. Our staff might be able to facilitate finding the trainers, but we need to bring in outside people to do the work, we do not have the people here who are able to do it. We've talked in the D E I committee that P D doesn't have to be the traditional all-day seminar with teachers in the room together. I provided information on P D opportunities available, as well as potential grants to pay for them several times, as far as I know, there's never been any action taken on those. I've also sent the list of schools in Massachusetts and Connecticut with equity positions, that was compiled when we were working on creating our position. A quick look at those district's website shows that they all have resources available on their websites, even doing that is a step more than what we have now. So I'm formally requesting that we redo this R F P to simplify what we're asking for, or ask those companies to resubmit based strictly on providing the P D, not the other things. Uh, you know, I want to say, I am so impressed with the work that Sally has been doing, I think she's a great addition to this district, but we need P D by people who are experts in that field. I have no doubt that the staff here can facilitate the training, but we are not equipped to do the work.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so, so I, I, you know, we put together the R F P, I, I understand, um, what you're, what you're, I understood your point. We, we're moving forward, you know, with, with the idea of, and in the last meeting we discussed this, the idea being that the, um, the money that we have allocated in the consolidated resource plan from, from Title II dedicated towards, um, the topic of equity professional development. We had talked about, you know, carrying that work forward, first of all, we're, we're looking, putting together a, you know, a, a plan for our professional development day dedicated towards equity professional development. We look forward to using the, when that money was set aside in Title II, obviously it was before we had the equity position filled, uh, which we do have filled now. We are looking forward to, we have a call into a, um, a professional who's local in the area, who's worked with our staff before, who has experience in North Kingstown, in the a, area of equity, um, professional development. We have, Sally and I have, have plans to meet with this individual, and to schedule a meeting, um, in, in, in the very near future about that. We have, Sally and I have, have plans to meet with this individual, to schedule a meeting in, in the very near future about that, to talk about how we can provide the type of professional development we want to provide, that you're kind of alluding to, which is that focused, sort of deep, deeply embedded equity training. That was the hope that we would use moving, that we would use, that we could felt that the, the mons, money that set aside, the funds that are set aside could be best used for. Not necessarily bringing a group from the outside, considering the scope, and I understand your point about that, size of the bids that we got, even if it was whittled down to professional development. The concern is that is going to probably use up all of those funds, and that will leave no wiggle room to use them in another way, you know what I mean, to.
We're also talking about funds that expire on June thirtieth, correct?
Yes.
So I have a question, what you're saying though is like Sally, I think, is able to go find it out, someone outside to come in and do it, versus us hiring a consultant to do that.
And I'm not looking to hire a consultant to find somebody, I'm saying we need to hire a consultant to come in and do the training, and that was what that RFP was supposed to be for. That RFP was supposed to be for, you know, people to come in and just do PD, but that RFP was not for that. Whether the RFP, the RFP was much bigger scope than that, the bids that came in were a much bigger scope than that. I just, you know, I, I know I sounded like a broken record, but it's been like two years at this point, and I cannot stress to you, you were not here at the time, neither of you were, I cannot stress to you how adamant and the stories that we heard of the people who teach in this district and the harm that is occurring daily to the students in this district because of the lack of professional development that our teachers have. And we do not have the people in the district who are able to teach what are te, and our teachers want it, like we have seen it, we have seen it, they have told us. And, and I appreciate what you're trying to do and like, you know, reaching out and doing like small things, but the longer this goes on, the more harm is being caused. Like, I, I, we need to bring in people who are experts in this field, and I, I just, I don't understand why we haven't been able to get it together to do it.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I am saying though that I think we can do that in a much more efficient and effective way without going to the RFP to do it. Based on, they just based on, and I understand your point about the scope of the RFP, I, I don't totally agree with that, I do think that they gave us more than we asked them for, but be that as it may. I just think based on those responses, our money is not gonna go as far in that way, in my opinion, than it would be to look at it from the perspective of using the individual in the current equity position combined with, you know, hopefully somebody who, who has an expertise in the area, who's local to the area, and who also has a, has a, has a background and a has a, has an experience working with our staff to provide that kind of support. And also, looking at how we can make some of the funds that are in this, in this amount go further to bring people together in a professional way to do this work.
So are you saying that person you're looking at would do a professional development for the teacher, for the staff?
My thought would be that it would not be a whole staff, but it would be more of like a, like a forming a core group of like a deep, like an equity team, if you will. A professional equity team that's representative of the different grade levels and different, different areas of, of focus throughout the district, and those people would get a more intensive training that then would be like sort of proliferated, if you will, to their sites.
Just to go backwards, two seconds, the original request, that, did the school committee approve the original, yeah, we approved the R, like when you, you, you started the RFP for the consultant, remember? Like, and so, we had done, we had done an action to approve, to go out for that, correct? Or allocate that money for that. Then at the last meeting that Jen wasn't at, did we take another action? Do we remember if we took a vote?
No, because they decided that you weren't, it was so, it was so, yeah.
Right, we said we were gonna do it locally, that we were going to look at.
No, we were gonna relook and re-present something else to us at a later time.
We were gonna do the PD locally, using like Rob to it Sally, and reaching out to a consultant we worked with prior, see if she's willing to take this on and work with us, and that's.
Yeah, I think it's the meeting, you just kind of, we're gonna go a different way, I don't think we even got deep into any discussion of what.
Can we go back to the companies that submitted the proposals and ask them to like bid on what we actually asked for, which is just the professional development and not the nineteen other things that they've done?
When you say just professional development, that, that, that's, it's, it's gotta be more than just that, cause professional development can mean a lot of different things.
Well, like, they quoted us on an equity audit, they quoted us on, like, there were so many other things in those bids, aside from what we're actually went out for, which is.
True, but even, right, but even with, with paring it down to the professional development aspect of it, and I think we would have to drill down to like what that professional development would look like, but I, I, I mean. I think we, we would have to, we would have to look at what that would look like, and based on just what the responses that we got were, I would have to say that it would most likely be it would most likely take away all the funds we have at our disposal.
There was one in there at forty-four thousand dollars that had like four different things quoted, I have a feeling that if that one came down, that that one might be within the ballpark.
Juju, what's the legal, I feel like, yes, I am still here. Like, when you put out an RFP and you're going through that process, like, and they put in information that, like, what happened is basically Rob received these RFPs, they were well over what we had to spend and well beyond the scope of what we were looking for. Like, what happens from a like purchasing standpoint in, in like that thing? Do you have to fail it, or do you, can you go back to those companies that bid, like, no, right?
Well, usually you have, it would say in the front that, you know, the items in there that are deemed non-responsive won't be considered. So you'd have to look and see what the language in the RFP is. You could also, you know, just go out to bid again and say that these, that none of these bids were responsive, go out again, either with the same language that you have and just emphasize, or obviously they're gonna know that it was non-responsive if you're going out to bid again, and just emphasize, this is what we're looking for, anything else that is included will not be considered, and go that route. How long ago did the, the bid go out, and, or did the bid close?
The bid closed in the beginning of December, like the fourteenth.
Oh, okay, so it's, it's fairly recent then?
Yeah.
Okay.
But by the same token, we can't contract individually with a person for over nine thousand dollars without going out to bid, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yep.
So how can we contract with an individual person?
So we're not at that stage, I'm bringing it up because we, we are, we are, we're, we're about to be having conversations like that, so, so I don't have specifics on that right now, I'm just saying that's kind of like what we're working on developing.
I have a question, Jen, about some, what are your, the DEI advisory committee's ideas on professional development? So you were saying there are other alternatives besides just like a one day, so like, like what would, I guess what would be the scope of what you're looking for, like to provide for the district, for the teachers?
So I guess it's true, but one is, we absolutely need people to come in and like have, you know, like trainings, but it doesn't have to be bring the entire district into the room, it could be like sending them into one school, it could be, you know, having it with teachers, it could be making online training available. Cause we can't mandate it, right, but like, you know, making online trainings available, you know, doing, letting them know like what resources other people have. Neri has professional opportunities, there are self-led study groups that teachers in Providence do.
Some of this is stuff that Sally can be researching herself and then putting out, some of what you're talking about is not, is saying, here is the PD that's available, and Sally researching that and then sharing that with everyone.
Right, but it's actually doing that is my point, right, that's one point, and the other.
But some of what you're mentioning, it's, these places have the facilitators who do it, right? So Sally can be putting it out there to people and saying, here are the opportunities, here's what we have that you can provide.
And I would love it if she would do that, that would be fabulous.
So, there's a couple of things, right, so, you know, like again, Jen did not, Jen, the DEI committee did not actually bring this one forward, it came through as the equity audit, but the, an original request for the consultant was from the administration, just like clarifying that piece, which is fine, and then, but things have evolved, and so then, the second recommendation.
And we brought that forward, cause we couldn't find someone to step into position as a DEI.
I don't think that was the timing, but.
No, that's.
It was, it was when we couldn't, we weren't.
No, Sally was hired, she had not started yet.
No, she had already been hired, but the PD requirement has been.
But I'm saying the consultant, we, this was from even prior to that, this was from last year.
That was in June, right?
Yeah, this was from last year, they said we go out for.
But the bid went out, Sally had already been hired when the bid went out, so tho, those two things are.
Right, but I'm just saying, we started looking for something like this even prior to Sally being here.
Just going back though, the money, I just wanna make sure that like the school committee stays within like the scope, and I, I don't disagree with you, Jen, I think you're both actually saying the same thing, it's just different lenses. But it's, it's January fourteenth, we need to spend this money by June thirtieth. My personal recommendation is that the administration work on figuring out the best ways to allocate the money that's allotted there. With that said though, I do feel like either with Sally or bringing in someone, we need to figure out a like deliberate and sustained way to do professional development in this district, and not just have like one-off. Like I think it's, it's either Sally or someone needs to put forth a plan, and like I was hoping that a consultant would help us with that, whether Sally is capable of that or not, I do feel like for FY twenty-six, we need a like deliberate and sustained plan that is multifaceted to Jen's point, but I don't think personally bringing in a consultant, like putting out another RFP, bringing in people at this point timeline-wise, like it's gonna, it's toast. And, but I do believe and trust the administration in using that money towards some things, I just don't know timeline-wise that it's gonna happen.
I, I.
Can you hire someone, like a consultant?
I feel like we had that PD in, what was it, April of last year, and there has been nothing since, so I.
No, I know.
I, I don't feel.
I wouldn't agree with that.
No equity-focused professional development since April. Is that an accurate statement?
No.
What have you done?
We've had, we've had, we've had many different, I mean, we've had many different faculty meeting topics, we've had many different like focused, we've had, we've had focused district-level discussions around discipline practices, around de-escalation strategies, around.
I'm talking specific anti-racist practices.
Okay, equi, equi, equity or anti-racist?
Anti-racist.
That's different than just.
That's different than equity, so, but what we've talked, we've talked about, we're at, we have an initiative right now with the Mass Insight Group around middle school, high school, opening opportunities for advanced coursework for students from disadvantaged backgrounds.
The equity audit specifically called for anti-racist training.
Okay, so just to clarify though, that was not what the RFP was, right? So, I'm just trying to figure out a way to move.
This racist district is afraid of saying that word, and I don't know why.
Yep.
Can I see you looking at me like that, but it's true.
We're not, we're not afraid to say it, I mean, I'm not sure why you'd say you're afraid to say it.
That's because we guys never say the word anti-racist.
Okay.
Okay, but when we talk about equity training, equity training means many things.
Yeah.
Now you're drilling down again very more specific of what you want.
I have provided the list specifically of the types of trainings that were recommended by the equity audit and have been recommended by the DEI advisory committee multiple times.
How much money is in the title, that, how much money are we talking about?
Twenty-six thousand.
Okay, so, Jen, what would success be, in your opinion, between now and June thirtieth with twenty-six thousand dollars?
To have a company or a professional that does this professionally for a living, training people to come in and work with this district, and have some actual, you know, specifically targeted that hits some of the topics that were outlined in the equity audit, training done.
Okay, so a company or professional to work with this district on, specifically on like the, the areas that were called out in the equity audit.
Anti-racism, microaggressions, implicit bias, LGBTQIA issues, talking about race, talking about identities, things like that.
So these are all topics that we're going to be discussing in our March professional development.
Awesome.
I think, I think, Rob, one of, and I know that there's small things happening in, in faculty meetings and everything's like that, but I do think that one of the things that I was worried about last year was that we were gonna do the, the April training and then like not do anything for a whole year, and that's kind of where we're at. And so I think we're trying to, and not that, and there's lots of reasons for that, right, it's not because we're, we don't care about the topic or anything, but I think what I was hoping with the consultant and the RFP that we had put out is that we were gonna be able to hire someone externally to be able to focus on this, while you all are focusing on the nine hundred other million priorities, and I think that was your thought too. So, I think the question right now is, like, what, like, I'm trying to not have like the school committee mandates them to the administration or the, you know, like I want us, I'm trying to figure out like a middle or compromise here on what we can move forward. Cause I don't disagree with Jen that like we haven't been as intentional as maybe we were hoping to be, but I also understood your point at the last meeting that like with time and with the staff resources that like, instead of going back out for an RFP for a company or consultant, that you wanted to utilize the money in a different way, right? And so, I'm trying to figure out like where.
What is, when you figure out what you're gonna do, won't you bring that back to the school committee?
Only if it costs more than nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
Right, or whatever, and only if it has to be approved funding-wise.
Okay.
Alright, it's nine fifteen, and so we had only extended to that point, and so my recommendation is that we, we, that is what it is now, in that we'll go on a future agenda. I don't wanna extend for, I think we've been able to talk about it, and then we'll, we'll go from there. Do we have any correspondence?
Yep.
We, we need to make a motion to table L.
Oh, I thought we already did, y'all did the motion to table L.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, correspondence?
Twelve seventeen, Robert Jones policies on the agenda tonight, twelve nineteen, from a student at the high school, better air conditioning slash heating systems within North Kingstown High School. Twelve twenty-seven, Tower Urban concern regarding DEI advisory board member. January fifth, Heather Murphy, process. January sixth, student at the high school, installation of water bottle fillers at North Kingstown High School. January eighth, student at the high school, request to present my project on internet censorship. January ninth, Jamie Orsi, DMS teacher on administrative leave. January ninth, Matt McCoy, municipal leaders announced priorities for the two thousand and twenty-five legislative session, and I just wanna say that since we sent out for the first time the policies that were gonna be reviewed prior to the school committee meeting, that we actually did get feedback from staff and parents, which was awesome, so I'm not gonna include those in the correspondence reports, but I just feel that it did work, so, that's it.
Thank you, just wish on that. Can we get?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?